Good evening and welcome to the May 14, 2015 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narckowitz and we'll begin by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee.
Ms. Budewal?
Present.
Ms. Laura Cullen?
Present.
Ms. Pam Hanna?
Present.
Ms. Ann Hennessy?
Present.
Mr. Daniel Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Here.
Ms. Carrie Napolchek?
Here.
Mr. Edith Hough?
Present.
President.
The Honors.
Excellent. The first item on our agenda is the public comment period and we ask that folks who wish to speak in public comments step to the microphone and say their name and address for the record and we ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes. We have one person who's signed up and that is Jeremy Whalen.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Whalen. I live at 214 Palmero Lane in Amherst, Massachusetts. I'm also a teacher in the tech department at the high school. Today I had the pleasure of having Chris Heber, who was a representative from the Department of Education Office of Digital Learning, coming to my classroom. We have been using in my architectural design, tech drawing, and advanced drawing SketchUp Pro 2015, which is a 3D modeling program. So he came in and he saw, he was asking questions and said, you know, what could we do to improve your students' experience with the software and how can we better help you? And this kind of rings true to what I said at the Budget Commission hearings. I basically looked at him and I said, you know, computers, technology, hardware. I liken it to having a, you know, all-expense-paid trip to Hawaii but not having the plane to get there. So we have at our disposal thousands and thousands of dollars worth of Autodesk programs, really professional-grade software, that parents call me and say, what is the next logical step for my child to succeed in architecture or engineering or design? And I say, you know, it's these Autodesk programs. By the way, here's how you can get a license to install it on your home computer. We can't put it on our computers because we don't have the processing speeds and capacity on our computers to run this. I don't think that's fair to the students, both at home and their parents, but also the underprivileged and low-income students. They should be able to, and I have a lot of them in my class after school, working on their projects and waiting for what we call the pinwheel of death on a Mac, it's that little rainbow, to stop rotating for two minutes after they change their perspective on their three-dimensional designs. They have the wherewithal to sit there, but it's frustrating for them and it's inefficient both in the classroom and for their futures. And I would love to see the district really prioritize not only the technology but also see innovative ways in which we can save on costs or be more efficient. I'll give you an example. We had, I took some of my department funds and thanks to Angelo, thanks to Candace, thanks to Donna Lawrence, thanks to Kim Bazzard, thanks to Brian Lombardi, we all got together. I worked with several students to spec out computers, take the parts, build five computers for $420 that perform at the $800 to $900 range. But these students stayed after. They knew the specs, they built these computers, installed the operating systems, they had an educational component to it, and it saved about 50% on those builds. That was five computers. We could do it with 50, we could do it with 100. But we need to come together and find kind of innovative ways to accomplish this. I'm more than willing to help. I have a kind of army of students that's dedicated to this, they're passionate about it, they want to see these computers be built, they want to see these new technologies being implemented. And I would say, please reach out to me, please reach out to Angelo and everybody that's involved here because everybody wants to see our students have all of the, you know, reach that full potential and please prioritize the technology for our districts. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak as part of the public comment session? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Are there any announcements from the city council members?
How about this?
Or the school committee, I'm sorry. I just, I'm sorry. Just came from a-
That was a long time ago.
I just came from a city council meeting, so I have a city council-related meeting, so I have city council on the brain. School committee members, sorry.
I do.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to say that I attended the other night Dollars for Scholars and 126 students received scholarships and the board wanted me to remind students that not only is Dollars for Scholars good for their senior year, but to please apply for the following three years. And I told them I would state that, so I did. The other thing, tomorrow evening at the middle school, well actually 4:30 to 6:00, there's an opening reception of a sampling of original artworks by kindergarten through eight students and there will be light refreshments provided by the PTO. And the art show will be on display until June 5th, so everyone's welcome to come to that. And only other thing is the technology. I went on Saturday, the Invent team had a fundraiser and it was an awesome, awesome experience and unfortunately it was also an awesome, awesome day. So hardly anyone attended. And if they do have it again, I would urge everyone to go. I had so much fun. Had there been kids there, they probably wouldn't have let me do as much as I did, but it was just incredible. I really learned the excitement for science that day and the police were there and everything. So just invite people to look out for that and to help support the Invent team so that they can go in June and give their self-feathering ore a chance. Thank you very much.
Any other announcements?
I have one.
Mr. Moore?
Which is that the Bridge Street School 100th Anniversary Celebration is Friday, May 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Bridge Street School Playground.
It's going to be fun. Any other announcements from school committee members or any city councillors that might be here?
Our students.
Okay. Okay, so we will move on to the recommended actions and we have a consent agenda that includes the approval of minutes of the school committee meeting of April 9. We have a contract for Heinemann Literacy Instructional Materials for $36,331.77. And we have four field trip requests. The eighth grade reading students going to High Meadow, Granby, Connecticut, June 8, 2015. The boys and girls track going to the Northeast Interscholastic Outdoor Track and Field Championships in Saco, Maine, June 13, 2015. Ryan Road fifth graders are going to the Connecticut Science Center, Hartford, Connecticut, June 17, 2015. And the boys and girls track are going to the New Balance Outdoor Nationals in Greensboro, North Carolina, June 18 through the 22nd, 2015.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve these items as part of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Now we move to reports and recommendations and we are joined by our student, one of our student representatives, Jonathan Latander. Must be getting down to the final meetings here as the school year winds down, but I'll turn the floor over to you for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, sadly it's probably going to be my last meeting for the year as I graduate next month. But speaking of graduating, the year's wrapping up and seniors' last day of classes is the 27th of May with exams being held on the 28th and 29th. Senior Day to High Meadows is May 26th and the senior events this year include the 28th, May 28th is Senior Awards Night at 6:30 PM. The Senior Prom, which is June 1st at the Log Cabin. Wednesday, June 3rd is the Senior Family Picnic at 5:30 at NHS and it gets over about roughly 7:30. Family members and friends are encouraged to come. Hamburgers, hot dogs, and veggie burgers will be provided by the school and the family brings the side dishes. June 5th is the Senior Breakfast for seniors only. They receive their caps and gowns, graduation tickets, and can request more if they need to. Rehearsal is from 10:30 to 12 and it's mandatory. Graduation is Sunday, June 7th from 3 till 5:30. Seniors need to be there for 2 PM. Student elections for class officers for remaining classes to be held in, for the remaining classes are being held in June. Grade 8 visit from JFK is June 10th. Students will tour the school and get a little gist of what's to come for them in their freshman year and get a gist of the academics and sports that they could be doing. They will also be back in the summer for the orientation like they did last year. Career Day for freshmen is June 16th. Math MCAS for sophomores will be held May 19th and 20th. This creates a late start for all other grades. Senior Capstone Fair Day will be May 20th, I believe. It's, the Capstone Project was a senior, it's a senior portfolio that each senior that took it learned in their years and what they highlighted out of it and their years of high school. The Film Festival will be held Thursday, June 4th. And the last full day of school will be June 19th with exams on the 22nd and 23rd. And the final day, which will be a half-day, will be June 24th. That completes my school report and I just wanted to personally thank everybody for letting me do it this year. It's been fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. We appreciate your service as well and congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, I have a proclamation that I'll be issuing and it's actually in honor of a holiday that occurred earlier in the month of May but obviously fell between our two meetings. It's a proclamation entitled "School Lunch Hero Day." And actually we've got some great sort of school lunch hero graphics on the proclamation which are kind of cute, very Schoolhouse Rock looking. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day and whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children and whereas the school nutrition professionals find creative ways to improve menus and get students excited about healthier choices. And whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas the day Friday, May 1st, 2015 is School Lunch Hero Day, now therefore I, Mayor David Narckowitz, do hereby proclaim retroactively, May 1st to be School Lunch Hero Day in the city of Northampton. The Northampton School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and have imprinted the city seal this 23rd day of April 2015. And I note that Carol DeMaro, our school- I'll present this to you. Service Coordinator, Director, Director of Command.
Thank you very much.
Say a few words, Mr.?
This is Carolyn Muzillo. She's one of my managers from Ryan Road School and one of my other employees is back there with our little one, Barb Warren. I cannot thank all the staff for the outpouring of support from my cafeteria staff. I know it brought tears to their eyes, excuse me, things like the cards made out of construction paper. I cannot tell you how many tears were shed over those. It was absolutely wonderful and I want to thank the whole district for their support of our department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we have a series of votes. The first is a vote regarding some athletic department gifts and there are five of them combined for the athletic department, boys soccer boosters for-
Hi, for Josh, please call the pool office. Joshua, please call the pool office. Thank you.
Boys soccer boosters for equipment, boys lacrosse boosters for assistant coach stipend, Athletic Booster Club softball uniforms, Athletic Booster Club for Ultimate Frisbee uniforms, and the Paint Night fundraiser proceeds for boys lacrosse. I'll turn this over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Just to add a little more detail to the gifts we'll be asking for a vote on, the first is from the Northampton Boys Soccer Boosters to Northampton, to the district. It includes 24 practice balls, 24 game balls, 24 home and away jerseys, and 24 pairs of shorts. The next is from the Northampton Boys Lacrosse Boosters. It's a gift in the amount of $2,460 for the payment of an assistant coach. The next is from the NABC. It's $2,075. It's a gift awarded to the softball team to pay for new uniforms. The next from the NABC, a gift of $2,085.40. It's a gift to pay for new Ultimate Frisbee uniforms. And the proceeds from the Art Night for Boys Lacrosse is in the amount of $465.
I'd like to move to accept the athletic department gifts with gratitude.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Minnick?
I just have one question or comment maybe about the gift that's being used to pay for an assistant coach. It concerns me a little bit that we're using an even income stream to cover a position. I'm okay with it for one year. Is that position going to be built into our, I mean, I understand that it's really, there's no difference supposedly, it's all expenses, but I would rather see us collecting money to pay for uniforms than I would be, even while I think that the district should be providing uniforms, I think we all agree to that, but since we can't, I appreciate very much the Booster Club stepping up and doing this, but I am concerned about looking to fund an ongoing position with a potentially not endless income stream. So just, has the Finance Director looked at that and, I mean, will this-
If you reference the athletic budget section of your FY '16 budget book, you'll see that the costs for the individual sports are laid out and the amount that is to be funded by the district and the amount that we're looking for for boosters from. So there are budgets and there are positions in next year's budget that we're looking for boosters to support, but we did increase substantially the amount of funding for the overall athletic program.
Any other questions?
Did we increase it substantially or did we just kind of, I thought that it was, that we just made it realistic as far as by the end of the year, we spent the money. So we didn't really, I mean, we increased it obviously, but just to cover what we were already pretty much spending, wasn't, was that more?
Well, that is true. However, we were in a position essentially of deficit spending in the athletic program before. And in that case, we were looking not only to boosters but also hoping to have money left in accounts at the end of the year in order to make the athletic budget balance. The increases in next year's budget, for the most part, represent reflecting the actual costs, so they won't have to deficit spend. But it does also, it does still include mixed revenue streams from the district and from booster organizations.
Okay, and I have another question regarding Ms. Minnick's concern. If an entire sport costs $10,000, just throw in an arbitrary number, then would it really matter if, because they can't play without a coach, but they also can't play without uniforms or balls or equipment. So would it really matter what the Booster Club supplies? I mean, if they have to supply a certain amount, does it really matter what it's going to as long as it's going to that fund?
I don't think that it matters ultimately, but when we designed the budget, we were looking to the boosters for certain things that we thought they could reasonably fund. Whether you take that amount of funding and distribute it over different costs associated with the sport doesn't really matter, but I do think that in terms of trying to work with the boosters in an open and transparent way, it's important that if we ask them to fund certain parts of the program, that we use the money they raise for those parts of the program.
Did we ask them to fund the coach?
All the positions that are not, all the assistant coach positions that are not in the district contract with NACE and freshman coaches, we asked to be supported by boosters and have historically asked to be supported by boosters.
Okay, and do we see that changing because I'm, the sport I'm really considering or directed towards is the Ultimate Frisbee, which just by the nature of it is so inclusive for all, you know, ages or abilities, I mean.
So the issue with the Ultimate Frisbee coaches is there is no rate in the contract for Ultimate Frisbee coaches. So we did budget for the teams to function. We budgeted for their tournament fees and for the equipment that they need, which is minimal, and for their transportation. The issue arises with the funding of coaches for them, not because, not from a budgeting perspective per se, but from a contractual perspective. Unlike the rest of the sports that have specified rates for their coaches and assistant coaches, there's no rate in the contract for Ultimate Frisbee coaches. So we've been treating them at the nearest comparable position that exists within the contract, which is the intramural sports coach position, even though they're not truly intramural sports.
So in this next rounds of negotiations that are coming up, is that where this would be addressed and we would be able to include, you know, the salaries and reexamine it?
Yes.
So is that, is that being examined now in, I mean, that's what we're looking at?
Well, we're not currently in contract negotiations, but that certainly could be a proposal that either side made.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Ms. Hanna?
In terms of determining the assistant coach stipend, since it's being funded by the Booster Club, who determines what that stipend's going to be? Is that set by the Booster Club? So let's say there's a Booster Club who can raise more funds and then pay their assistant coach more versus another. So you have two assistant coaches in different sports, but by the very nature of the resource that that sport provides, it can be, you know, have inequitable.
In the past, that has been an issue. In fact, it was an issue that we dealt with, I believe, on the matter of the assistant coach for the softball team. And the rate had been set in the past on the basis of whatever boosters were able to raise. Some years, the same individuals made different amounts of money based on what boosters were able to raise and other years, coaches in similar positions on different teams got different rates based on what boosters were able to raise. So this year, the stance we took was that if there's a rate in the contract for assistant coaches, that's what the rate needs to be. The boosters have to raise that amount of money if we're going to fund the position. If they raise more, they can't use that to increase the salary for that position.
What happens if they come slightly shy? Do they cancel games? Do they have half the uniform? I mean, do we just not play that year? You know, supply your own t-shirts? I mean, what happens if we say, you know, all of you have to do it and, you know, three of them don't hit it, hit the mark? What happens to that sport? I mean, I know you said we've been deficit spending, so now we're actually putting it in the budget. Are we still going to be able to adjust at the end of the year and then reexamine again? Reevaluate again?
Well, the deficit spending wasn't necessarily related to coaches' salaries. It was related to a whole host of things, including transportation, tournament fees, official fees, and other things. We haven't been in the position this year of a Booster Club being able to almost fund a position because we've said this is what the position requires. If you want the position, this is the amount that needs to be raised.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion on the table to accept these gifts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the gifts are accepted. Next, there's a gift vote. This is the Northampton High School PTO and it is to accept a gift of $2,000 for the senior class trip.
This is a trip for the seniors to High Meadows. This will be a new tradition for Northampton High School. Many of the schools I've worked for in the past have taken seniors to High Meadows and it's a day that I think students really enjoy. This is an attempt by the administration, I think, to channel the energy of graduating seniors into positive directions and one that I fully support. I think this is something that will probably take a few years to fully catch on and become a tradition, but I think it's a good direction for our kids and it's certainly a very worthy activity.
Do you know what they have been doing in the past? I mean, well, when I went, they used to go over a bridge at Smith College on the little pond and the police just closed their eyes. That was a long time ago. So even Lisa wasn't on the board then, no.
I have to say that I'm still new here, but I do know that last year after I had accepted the position, but before starting, I remember reading about a senior prank that included, you know, spreading flour over different classrooms in the high school. So I think this is an attempt to try to give seniors something that is going to be more productive and less destructive for them to do.
Move to accept the gift from the NHS PTO for $2,000 for the senior class trip.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the gift is gratefully accepted from the high school PTO. Next, we have another gift, the Browning School, and this is a gift of classroom technology. I believe Angelo Rota is here to speak about that. I don't, I don't think, you don't have, you don't have to actually have it up, Angelo. It's just more for the recording.
Okay. One of our elementary school technology integration specialists, Dreah Marks, she's at Ryan Road and at the Leeds School, and she's constantly monitoring listservs out of New York City and that area because she used to teach in New York City, particularly Manhattan in one of the private schools. So a while ago, she came across an offering from the Browning School, which is in Manhattan, Upper East Side, and they have a number of smart boards, short throw projectors, Unifi Smart Boards, which is the board plus the projector attached to it. A number of these are available and she contacted the school. They're very willing to donate this material to us. We would love to have it and so we're planning on, with your approval, to go on June 5th to rent a U-Haul truck and go down and pick it all up and bring it back.
Any questions from school committee members about that?
Don't want it.
You don't want it? Okay.
I just have a question. So how did we actually connect and decide that they were going to give it to us in Northampton? I mean-
Well, when they place it on the listserv, it's out there, it's available, and it's first come, first served.
Wow.
And so she contacted them and they said, sure, this is great, but you must come June 5th because if you don't, there will be other people who want it. And so that's why we want to act quickly and get back to them and make sure that we'll be there June 5th so that we can get that material.
That's fantastic and that's fantastic that she was so proactive and was able to get that for us. It's just exciting.
Any-
Are we receiving this gift because they're upgrading at their school or is it-
Yes.
-becoming antiquated? I wouldn't think for us-
No, they're apt to new things.
Yeah.
These are schools that are very, I don't know how you would describe them, but they're very well off-
Well-resourced.
...say and have a lot of resources. They're moving to new equipment. This is fine equipment, nothing wrong with it. It's just that they're moving to a new level and they want to move it out and I guess, from what I understand, June 6th, they're doing new construction. And so they need to have everything out of there to make way for these workers coming in and putting in new things and moving on, so.
You've looked at the places within the district that you're going to be putting the equipment and-
Yes.
-building and the infrastructure supports it well?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Press Chair?
I would like to make a motion to accept this gift.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions or- Okay. Any other, uh, questions or, okay, all those in favor of, are accepting, uh, this gift from the Browning School, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Gas up the U-Haul. You're on your way.
Volunteer.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a vote, and this concerns a new job description. Uh, this is a job description for a curriculum teacher leader, uh, and I believe, uh, Dr. Chevers is here to, uh, to tell us about it tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, in the same way that we are upgrading our technology, we are also upgrading our curriculum. And this is the job description for the curriculum teacher leaders, of which we have at this point 21. We have 21 curriculum teacher leaders that have now have been trained. They've been through understanding by design training. They know how to create and construct a unit according to the state's standards. And the essential functions are to actively participate in, uh, summer or after-school curriculum meetings, to work independent hours to complete the job, facilitate grade level or department teacher curriculum reviews in their buildings, and that's a very important part of being a curriculum teacher leader. You're responsible for organizing and, uh, creating curriculum across your grade level, creating meetings. Develop content understandings, essential questions, KUDs, what it is we want students to know, understand, and be able to do. Assessments, differentiated instructional elements and learning plans. To work collaboratively with all of the curriculum team members to effectively write differentiated instructional plans. So this means working with special education teachers as well. To work collaboratively with all curriculum team members to effectively align curriculum horizontally and vertically. That means K through 12 and also within the grade level. Um, and to apply pedagogical content in at least one content area and/or special education. Um, and the qualifications, basic knowledge of the district-wide curriculum writing template, understanding by design, interest in becoming a teacher leader for their grade level or department, basic knowledge of our Atlas program, which is a district-wide curriculum software, and we've been providing our curriculum teacher leaders with professional development in that. In fact, we have actually even honed, we have a professional development, uh, member of our curriculum committee who is actually now providing that professional development. Solid understanding of grade level content area and expectations, a history of collaboration, interest in further leadership trainings, effective communication and ability to work collaboratively in a team environment. And I'm asking the school committee to please, um, approve the job description. I'd be delighted to answer any questions you might.
Move to approve.
There's been a motion to approve. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay. Any questions about this new, uh, job description? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so the assumption is that, uh, curriculum teacher leaders will be already an employee of the district?
Absolutely.
But, you know, it's not in the job description as a requirement. And in other words, every piece, uh, it could be something that a person could just do independently of.
Well, if you look at the educational and experience under preferred competencies, it states that each teacher must have professional teacher status in the North Hampton Public Schools. So that's actually stated. Absolutely, yes.
I didn't know. I was just saying if you could have professional teacher status.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Yes, professional teacher status. That means they've been in the district for at least three years.
Dr. Provost also wanted to add something.
I would also just add, under compensation, uh, it references the Unit A contract. Yes.
Clearly the expectation, but I didn't know if it was going to be a requirement.
Any other questions about this, uh, description? Okay.
How, uh, you said that you have 21?
Yes, we do.
What, what would be a full complement? I mean, is that, it seems like more than one per grade level.
It is. We would like, uh, the ideal would be to have one curriculum leader, uh, per building per grade level, but I don't think we'll ever be able to fund that or do that. But to have at least one person per building and, let's say, every other grade level and in every subject at the middle school and the high school and in grade levels, it, it comes to about 30 CTLs. That would be, that would be as close to the ideal that we could probably do.
And, uh, forgive me, I think that curriculum, uh, this is clearly something, and it, we're going to talk about root cause stuff a little later, and, and this is clearly a place where we need to be spending some effort and some money, but it seems like when you get CTLs, now you're going to do more curriculum writing, both of which have a stipend. Where, where's the funding coming from for this?
The funding comes from our Title II, and we also have a teacher leadership grant this year that paid for some of the professional development for our teacher leaders. So that was very helpful.
Any other questions about this, uh, job description? Okay, hearing none. Uh, again, there's a motion made and seconded to approve it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it is approved. Thank you, Dr. Chevers.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another job description. This is a required vote to approve the food service director, uh, job description. I'll turn it over to Dr. Provost.
Thank you. The food, food service director job description in your packet is a description that was created to support the job search that we currently have underway for a replacement for Mr. Morrow. This job description, um, comes to you tonight because a lot has changed in the world of food services from the last time we went out to search on this position. Um, the prior job description was about a page and a half. Um, this one, as you can see, is more extensive, and it reflects changes in the field and changes in the expectations for the person who, um, will be, uh, taking this position. So the job description was developed collaboratively by Ms. Morrow and Ms. Walzak, um, looking at what are the actual functions that she does in reality, whether or not they're part of the current job description, what the current requirements are in the law, and what, um, other comparable food service director postings and job descriptions look like. Um, so this will, this has been distributed as a draft job description with the posting that went out, and we'd, um, ask for your approval of this to finalize it for the candidates that we'll be talking to shortly.
Move to approve the food service director job description.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Been a motion made and seconded. Ms. Minnick?
No. I'm just curious, for no reason at all except just curiosity, do, are these job descriptions reviewed by legal counsel?
They're not reviewed by legal counsel, but they are reviewed by HR.
Any other questions?
Other question?
Ms. Fallon?
Shocking turn of events. Um, there's just one typo I would, I would maybe fix the, should I point it out now or?
Sure.
Okay, the injury to coworkers. It should probably be coworkers.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Um, any other questions about this or, or comments?
I do one question.
Sure, Ms. Hennessy.
Is the person, the position, rather, to contact parents when, um, those of us who occasionally don't pay attention to our children's eating, um, is this the person who contacts them?
You mean, it, for people who have balances due?
Yes, those.
I thought she was talking about new.
Our process is that the food service director is the first one, um, who intervenes. After that, um, if the, if the debt remains unpaid, the principal and the business manager will become involved. I don't think that isn't.
Okay, is that just assumed part of it, or?
It's probably more policy than it is job description. Yeah, and I've gotten that call too, Ms. Hennessy, so don't feel bad. Don't feel bad.
Does it say, "Judges as may be assigned"?
So, um, any other questions? Okay, one more.
No problem.
Under essential functions, plans, directs, and budgets for food services for the, all North Hampton Public Schools.
Okay.
For all of them?
Yeah. We'll fix that one.
Just for the, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the description, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is, um, agreed to, and, uh, and that process goes forward. The next item on the agenda is a report, and this is recommendations from the PE, Physical Education Ad Hoc Committee, and, uh, Principal Lombardi from the high school is here, uh, this evening to present that.
Good evening. Um, as you know, that this fall, we were charged with, um, putting together an ad hoc committee to discuss, um, and plan the implementation of the state requirement of adding physical education to the high school. Uh, it's a four-year requirement. Um, so we started an ad hoc. The ad hoc was members, including myself, Superintendent Provost, school committee members, Laura Fallon, Blue DeValle, Karen Jarvis Vance, our Director of Health Services, um, and teachers from the high school, um, Sue Biggs, Jim Bridgman, Salem Derby, Lisa Leary, Bob Melnick, Maureen Moore, Melanie Similovitz, and Ben Taglerari. Our task, our group then broke down into three other groups, um, one being, um, curriculum policy and schedule. Um, and we had, we met about four times as a subcommittee, and then there were numerous meetings, um, for each group as well, charged with their specific tasks. What I'm presenting to you tonight is we pretty much have a two-stage, um, plan. Um, the first stage will be, um, for implementation for the class of 2020. Um, that will be incoming freshman 2016. And the initial plan will be that they continue for their first year of PE wellness to receive current wellness programming as is. That currently is a one semester course for one full credit, um, covering a variety of health, um, um, curriculum and topics. Sophomore year, they will then be taking, um, 10-week PE health-related, um, classes or programming. Um, to counterbalance of that, we will also then have elective-based electives. So a student would take first semester a 10-week, um, maybe a phys ed class, and then the other 10 weeks would be of the semester, maybe, uh, foundations and art or mu- music class. Um, our lens for looking at this was twofold. One, to try to be cost-effective. Um, if you remember, um, Dr. Provost's, um, presentation, um, early in the year, you know, three years from now, the outcomes are pretty, might be pretty tight, and the concern was prevent, um, presenting a program that included adding staff right now, where we, that might not be the possibility years down the road. Um, the other one was to work within our schedule as is. We have a four-by-four block. If you change a schedule, potentially, that could mean additional staff as well. So we try to stay within the block schedule, um, be cost-effective with the staffing. My current staffing right now for my wellness department, um, can cover a whole, one class worth, a freshman class of wellness, as well as we think cover at least half of a sophomore class. We think with this 10-week model, cost-effective wise, we can meet that. Um, the other lens that we tried, we were trying to consider was maintaining our rich, um, elective program that we have. The concern was that if we pushed all students into PE in a way, they, they would be coming from somewhere, and that potentially would come from our elective-based programming, and then that would cause some serious decision-making down, down the road. That's stage one. Stage two, which will be reconvening next fall, 2015, will be to discuss how we can continue this for our juniors and our sophomores. When the class comes in at 20, for 2020, again, freshman year, 2016, 2017, they'll have the wellness component. 27, 2018, they'll have the 10-week model, and the freshmen that come in 2017 will fall into that component. Uh, so next year, we're going to get together and begin formulate what will the, um, the 2018, 2019 school look like for them. Um, on the table right now are, is looking at maybe, um, a full-day mountain day, um, where kids would go hiking, or having a, a series of, um, presentations that students could go for that were maybe based on health-related topics. Um, or for example, when we had Chris Heron speak early in the year, create a series of events they could go to, to count for, um, credit for that requirement. Um, the, the state is pretty, um, lack of clarity what can be the curriculum. So we're trying to have a very health-based curriculum that gives students, you know, relevant information where they are developmentally entering a high school that they can carry on with them. We're trying to add activities, um, that students can carry on with them outside of high school, that they lead, lead to a healthy, um, lifestyle. And for junior and senior year, now we're trying to figure out what would those components be, um, what would the curriculum be and how much, how many times per year, for example, would it be four seminars, um, and how would we create stipends to pay for those to be developed? Um, that is it currently. Oh, in addition to this, we also came up with, um, bringing back, um, starting next year, um, every other day, um, classes for students that are in special education that through a team process was required, uh, for, uh, to serve them best, that they had an opportunity to take strategy every other day, and we're going to bring, bring back some electives that they'll be able to counterbalance that, um, for them as well.
Ms. Minnick, Eckercheck?
Um, I just had a question, and I'm not sure if this was answered earlier, but I remember, or it was, remember that it was raised, and that is whether or not students would be able to get credit for activities that they do outside of school that may not be school-sponsored.
As of right now, the, um, the committee felt that, um, we were not going in that direction. I do need to say that right now. I, I think, again, considering that we're looking at something that is, um, three years out from now, um, who knows what the economic landscape will be. Uh, we do feel that for the freshman and sophomore, um, plan that I've laid out to you, not at all. Uh, when we begin planning next year, that is not what we're looking at, we're looking at.
Can I ask why?
Uh, I think we felt the, the equity, there was an equity issue, um, beyond our athletes. Um, you know, we, we have a lot of students that come from a variety of backgrounds. Not all students might have access to events or activities outside of school. Um, and by doing that, um, the concern was that if there was a person that would receive credit for, um, something after school. The students that didn't have access to that, therefore, would have to have that met in school. The equity issue was that those students, therefore, wouldn't have as much opportunities to avail themselves of academic opportunities in the school day, whereas students, because of circumstances or situations, um, they had the luxury maybe of playing a sport or an activity that we counted, those students would then be, um, more available to take a wider, um, berth of the classes in school. It was, it was, um...
Yeah, yeah, and...
It's, there's a lot of discussion about it.
Places like, you know, creativity, like creatively constructing, like walking program. I mean, I know some of that stuff can't be supervised, and there's a lot that was into the decision, but it seems like, it seems like creatively, you know, there are things that we could, places that we could go with that, just as a suggestion.
I think there was a lot...
That could maybe level off the economic.
I think there was a lot of, a lot of willingness to create, to create a lot of ideas and go very wide in this. Um, I think what we kept on coming back is that there, sometimes it's not the opportunities of, of, of a class being offered, it might be a life circumstance opportunity. Some students might not, we could have a whole battery of classes or walking groups or whatever, we could have a huge battery. Some students might be in circumstances that, you know, it's great, I would love to take that, however, my circumstance can't avail me of that. I need to be home, uh, transportation issues, I need to work to help my family out, I need to get home for babysitting, et cetera. Those were the things, that, that was the voice that people were presenting at this committee that we needed to be cognizant of as we're going there. Um, and again, so at this moment, that is not something that we're moving forward in that direction.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Hennessy?
I totally get that. And part of me was thinking, however, that could we flip it around, though, and say that if we were to give credit to those students who were taking after-school sports or whatever, dance, horseback riding, that is about equity, could we then offer more enriching classes and prioritize those students who aren't, who don't have that opportunity? So for example, could we offer a rad class for girls or fencing class? That might be something that many people can't afford, but those kids who can't stay after because of babysitting or whatever, they have to do work, they don't have the money, um, could then be prioritized to take those classes because we have fewer kids taking them because of athletics. Does that make sense?
If I, if I hear you right, are you, are you saying that if we had, if we wanted the model of allowing credit to be earned, would we then have the opportunity to create more dynamic classes? would we then have the opportunity to create more dynamic classes that in exchange for them not having the opportunity to do athletics, for example, after school, we could offer them something enriching and dynamic during the school day?
And they would be prioritized to get those courses?
Yes. That was definitely part of the discussion. I can say this, there's a lot of excitement among, especially Salem Derby and the PE department, about being able to create these ten-week models. And when we're looking, you know, pretty much right now, I mean, what we offer is wellness and phys ed. And phys ed, if we all remember going back to our days, is, it's, you don't really stray much off from it. It's, you know, team sports, you know, and that's not for everybody. So there's a lot of excitement to be offering some different, from yoga to tai chi. I mean, there's, I think we have a, an ability to bring some very exciting ten-week components to our students that will hopefully meet the needs of our students that want traditional team sports to weightlifting, but also there's something more dynamic from, you know, a rad program, things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. DeValle?
I think that the ten-week program is wonderful. I think that it's a wonderful opportunity for kids, students to try things out. And also, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to look at the scheduling when we're looking at the long block, short block, and be able to sort of ease our way in and see how it's working, just as you're doing with the special ed. The idea of equity, I'm glad that we're doing it all within the school hours, just because we don't offer transportation primarily after school. So that right there cuts out all equity. I just want to say, I think you've done a wonderful job with this, and I like the direction that it's going. And I like the fact, and really respect the fact that you're keeping equity right up there in the forefront so that all students have that same opportunity. Thank you.
So any other comments or questions about the, about this report from the ad hoc committee? Dr. Provost?
I just wanted to commend Mr. Lombardi on getting us to this point. If you saw in yesterday's Gazette, the 25-year-ago section, it says, "Twenty-five years ago today, there's a new state law. Students at the high school need to take PE. Northampton hasn't really figured out what to do with it yet." So I feel like, at long last, we have a plan.
A year thirty will be okay.
Twenty-five years.
It's true. Okay, thank you. I don't believe there's, there's a, I don't believe we have a vote scheduled for this. This was just a report. So thank you, Principal Lombardi, and to the committee.
Nice night.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proposed teacher sabbatical. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I skipped over, actually, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the superintendent, and this is the root cause analysis presentation, which is a follow-on to Dr. Provost's entry findings. So I will turn the floor over to Dr. Provost.
Thank you. As they say, and now we're getting to the root of the matter. Tonight, I present the results of our root cause analysis, which I hope will be the beginning of an inclusive conversation on things we really ought to change if we'd like the district to reach its full potential. Unlike the entry findings, the root cause analysis is not an attempt to lay out the strengths and weaknesses of the district in an even-handed and objective way. It attempts to take a look at some of the weaknesses we've identified and follow the chain of causation back to the point where we uncover some of the deep structural causes for the problems we see. It's a little denser in terms of its style, because I think we're dealing with issues that are much more nuanced and require a more detailed explication. And it's a little harder to take on emotionally, because it's just, okay, here's a problem, here's another problem, here's another problem. But I think it offers the opportunity to begin to search for solutions that are capable of affecting change of a profound sort, a really profound sort. You know, one of the problems that we noticed in the entry findings is lack of explicit curriculum. And writing a curriculum is a great solution for that. But if we don't ask ourselves the question, well, how did we ever get to the point of not having a curriculum? Then the same thing that caused that problem will cause another problem to arise. So we looked at six of the barriers to success that we identified in the entry findings, and tried to follow them down to their root causes. And we've identified six root causes for, I think, the most vexing problems for the district. And these are organized into two groups. Environmental are causes that originate primarily in the context of the district. And then there are organizational problems that are things that originate within the district itself. And we have three of each type, and I'll talk a little bit about each of them. The first environmental cause is a growing opportunity gap. At one point, I spoke of an administrator who felt that his school was becoming bifurcated. Well, if you look at the distribution of family income within our schools, it's not only bifurcated, but it's bimodal. And this document that you have in front of you has been circulating through our office for a few weeks. So people who work closely with me were aware of it. And I have to tell you, one day, a registrar came down and said, "You have to hear my morning. This is exactly what you're writing about in the first problem with opportunity gap." She said that she had enrolled three families in the morning. These were three families in the same grade, in the same school. First student she enrolled was with, living in a family that had obtained subsidized housing. The second family had just bought a home valued at over three-quarters of a million dollars. And the third family she enrolled was a family who had just obtained housing subsidy. And this goes on day after day. And it's not that the schools or the district have any, any difficulty educating effectively students who are able to bring resources such that they're able to, their parents are able to purchase homes of three-quarters of a million dollars. And it's not that we have any problems with educating students who need, whose family need help with housing. We love them all, and we can educate them all. But it becomes an issue when, between subsidized housing and almost a million dollars, there aren't a lot of houses in the middle. And there aren't a lot of families in the middle. And so that's what we see increasingly in our district, and that's the first root cause we pointed out. And it's the first thing that I think we need to work on in terms of finding a very efficacious solution to some of the problems that we face as a district. The second root cause, again, primarily environmental, is the support expectation mismatch. If we were sitting at, in this room or the room that preceded it, counterparts a hundred years ago, school would be 180 days, school would have a principal and some teachers, and then the school board and the superintendent. Now, we still have 180 days, we still have a principal and some teachers, but we have an incredibly different host of mandates. We have educator evaluation, we have MCAS, we have adequate yearly progress, we have special education, Section 504, bilingual education. All of these new pieces that were added to the job without adding any time or without adding any support. In fact, in some ways, we've reduced the support that's available to teachers as we've increased expectations and increased the complexity of the job. So that doesn't necessarily set up staff to be productive and successful. Typically, you think of, when you raise expectation levels, you want to raise support. That gets people into a very productive zone. But if you raise expectation while leaving support the same or decreasing support, it can create burnout, it can create anxiety. It's something that I see quite frequently. And it's one of the pieces of this job that I have to sort of contend with, it's a headwind. There are people throughout the district and throughout schools in the, across the land, who are on the verge of burning out, on the verge of shutting down. I received an email from a teacher this morning who said, you know, "Between educator evaluation, DDMs, and all the new stuff I have to do, just in the last two years, I feel like I have to stop doing all the extra stuff for kids." And that's, that's not a teacher who doesn't care about kids, it's not a teacher who isn't committed. But it's a sign that the, there's a fundamental breakdown in the morale of our teaching corps and our administrative corps, based on the fact that it's always more and faster. And by the way, we're probably going to be critical of you if you don't do it right. So the third root cause is conflicting accountabilities. There are all different systems that are competing for the attention of administrators and teachers, and trying to force behavior to go in different directions. We talk a lot about school choice, and we talk a lot about being in an area where there are a lot of choices for kids. And that creates a kind of accountability known as market accountability. We also have two Level III schools. We are still under the aegis of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and all of that brings. And that provides bureaucratic accountability. And often, the two collide. The things that people may want to do in order to make their school seem more attractive to others are things that the bureaucratic requirements that the schools have to follow often say, no, you can't do that. You know, I think the high school PE example and the 25-year stall was sort of a, a perfect example of that. Because the first meeting of the PE ad hoc group, actually, this was prior to the first meeting of the PE ad hoc group, I said, "Well, you know, it's the law, it's been the law for a quarter of a century. All students need to take PE every year. Why isn't it happening here?" And the response that I got from a lot of people was, "Because everybody wants to go here. Would we care what the law is?" You know? Why, why would we implement something that might make the school less attractive when this is, this is a highly attractive educational venue for a lot of families? So those are the environmental causes. Then we have the organizational causes. The first is fragmentation. This is something that school districts are very, very susceptible to, just because of the way they're set up. Schools need to be able to run semi-autonomously because they face hundreds of very complex problems on a daily basis and need to resolve them without being able to check in and get support and have oversight of everything they do. However, the ability to be independent decision-making entities sometimes causes schools to spin off in their own directions and to lose contact with the mothership, if you will. So every district, I think, struggles with fragmentation. But I think that fragmentation in Northampton is particularly strong. I think it was probably exacerbated by frequent changes of leadership, which is the thing that can kind of hold it together and give schools a common sense of focus. And so it can get to, and I'm not going to say it's to this point yet, but there are very strong camps around a number of things that are set up in different schools. And bringing that all back together into a cohesive vision of K-12 education for the district will be necessary for this, this district to function the way that it should. The next organizational cause is reactive strategies. This is something that we spend a lot of time wordsmithing about. Because one of the original, earlier drafts of this said that if you look at the organizational behavior of Northampton schools, you see a preference for reactive strategies. And a lot of people said, well, we, it's not really that we had a preference. Maybe we had a predilection, or maybe that's what we did, but we didn't want to be making the decisions we were, we kind of forced in that direction. So as I, as I point out in the work, a reactive strategy is very, is very, is a very good strategy if the prior status quo was excellent, and it's something you can return to, and the new condition is worse. However, when you're trying to implement reactive strategies in the context of a rapidly changing environment, it's not a good strategy, because you're trying to go back to a condition that you can never go to again, because the environment has changed too much. So in order to move forward, I think we have to get out of this pattern of looking backwards to re-establish the old order, to thinking about, okay, we're in a new world now. And how, what are the opportunities of the new world, and how do we strategize to prepare for that? And then the final organizational cause is political versus data-informed decision-making. I think on one level, there's a distrust of data universally in the district. Data of any kind, whether it's data that comes from standardized testing, or whether it's data that comes from a teacher's home classroom, or whether it's data about attendance. I was, I was observing a conversation between educators, and there was a teacher who was doing an intervention, and it was appearing to be a very effective intervention. And the principal said, "You know, we really should get some data about what you're doing and share." And the reaction was shut down, like, you know, no, that is bad. So that, that's one half of the equation. The other half is that a lot of, a lot of the decisions within the district have sort of been promulgated, not on the basis of what data would suggest would be best for kids, but on the basis of what side, camp, whatever, is able to marshal the most political support for its cause at the time. So, you know, an example of that was a conversation I was having not long ago with some teachers about one of the curriculum issues, one of the many curriculum issues in the district. And the response to something I had said was, "Well, you know, I think if this is the decision the district makes, we're not even going to bother with the school committee, we'll go right to city council." Okay, so first of all, that's not appropriate. Second of all, it's not data-informed. And third of all, it, it really is symptomatic of the idea that we, decisions aren't made sort of on the basis of what we know about what's best or what we can know about what's best, as much as they're made on who can, who can bring the, the best political organization to the table. So those six things are very deeply embedded habits, if you will, within the district that I think we have to work on addressing in the next district improvement plan. And so now that I've sort of taken you to the bottom, the, the hope is that if we have a district improvement plan that focuses on strategies that aren't tinkering around the edges, strategies that aren't, let's try this program, or let's try that program, or let's do more technology, but things like, okay, so let's develop some strategies to address this growing opportunity gap, because it looks like this is the population we're going to have to educate. Some strategies around, okay, instead of functioning as six schools, why don't we function as a single district? Strategies that say, before we do anything, let's see what the data says. Those are the things that I think would really transform the way the district operates and really bring us to a much higher level of functioning. And so we're shortly to begin the district improvement planning process. I have some dates that I'll be announcing when I do my superintendent's report. And my hope is that our next district improvement plan is targeted laser-like on strategies that are related to ameliorating or eliminating these six root causes.
Ms. Minnick?
Well, I sort of feel like I just stood in front of the mirror in my underwear situation. You have, you really have, like, shone a bright light on the district, a harsh light, if you will, even. And it was, it is, it was depressing, it is a little hard to read all the problems one after another. So number one, I appreciate your presentation just now, including the humor that it did, so that it's not totally unpalatable. Second, I want to say how informative and educational this is for the school committee to hear this, and I'm sure for a lot of other people in the district to hear these sorts of things. of things. It shows the kind of depth that you've gone into to, and I'm, I continue, I've said this before, and I don't mean to embarrass you in public, but I continue to be blown away by the level of commitment and the, the sort of thoughtfulness that you bring to your position. It's very refreshing. The third thing I would like to say is, thank you, because I realize that while this is your job, you've got a lot of other stuff that you do every hour of your workday that is your job. And by rights, this has to be done sometime outside of that time. So, I appreciate very much the time and effort that you've put into this. And I want to thank the people with whom you worked. I assume the administrative leadership team deserves some credit for looking at this. I have a couple of questions, one of which is, if those, if the administrative leadership team was involved in creating this, that's sort of like, again, a self-examination. Were they surprised to find that they were fragmented, that they weren't working as cohesively as they might have thought? Or maybe they worked together well, it's their buildings that don't seem to mesh? Is that more?
So, the primary strategy we used in order to get at the roots is this technique called the five whys, where you put up a problem, and then you just keep asking why, and then you ask why the answer that is purported for that. So, these conclusions came out of those discussions. It wasn't me saying, "Oh, no, you're fragmented." It was people answering the question, saying, "You know what? We're all doing our own thing." And that's, that's one of the problems. So, they were, I would say, not surprised by the findings. I think they were engaged in a way by the process that allowed them to reveal things that they already knew about themselves in a way that felt safe enough that they could say it.
Do you want to give us a sneak preview on how you may be looking to come up with a district improvement plan that addresses these things? Do you, are you going to use the five whys on us?
I bet you are.
Do you have another?
Yes, so, we have dates.
I'm sorry, you can save it for your report if you want.
Sure. We have dates identified. The, we'll be meeting in the JFK Library, May 21st, 28th, June 4th, 15th, and 22nd. And we're looking to have six different groups working on each of the root causes. Each group will have an administrator, teacher, parent, community member. And I'm also looking for two school committee members to serve, so I'll just throw that out there. And so, there is a process that I'll be asking them to use, and one person will be sort of in charge of facilitating each group. The first part is to come up with a theory of action, which says, "Okay, so if this is where we are now, what conditions would we need to change in order to get to the opposite state, or to get to a state that was closer to what we want it to be?" And then, after sort of the theory of action is developed, to describe individual tactics that can be employed in a sequenced way over the next three to five years to successfully move from the current state to where they want to be. And then, we'll bring all the groups together at the end to sequence them, because you can't work on all six root causes at once. In fact, my philosophy is, you can only do three things well in a year, especially when you have this support expectation mismatch already going. And one of the things is something you can't plan for that will just force its way onto your agenda. So you should really plan for two things and leave a placeholder thing for the third. So we'll sort of strategize, what is the best sequence to implement the initiatives that the different working groups come up with? And then, bring that back to the committee, hopefully in July, maybe in August, for the committee to approve. And then, the school improvement plans will be developed from there and break down the tactics at even greater level of detail for how do we implement these things within our individual buildings.
I'm excited.
Other comments, Mr. Val?
I have to reiterate what Lisa said, as far as I'm really excited for the direction that we're going and the amount of thought and work that you've put into this and clarity. It's just awesome as far as it goes. Phys ed, we did do phys ed. Years ago, that was something they cut.
Okay.
And then they brought it back. Actually, we cut it out of the, out of the elementary school and tried to keep it all the way. And there were a lot of problems where the state was not happy with us. So, it's been a roller coaster. But I just wanted to thank you very, very much because this, there's a plan. I mean, there's a plan, we could see it. I've been on this for four years, I've not seen a plan. And this is exciting.
Ms. Necker.
Just like to add one quick thing to that, and that is, I appreciate your honesty. That's really important. It's important for us all to hear it. It's important for us all to know it's okay to be honest. And without that, we can't move forward. So, I appreciate that.
Other comments, other discussion points? Okay, well, oh, I thought you raised your hands. Sorry. So, okay, well, you'll be reminding folks of those dates and when this process moves forward. Okay. Now, the next item on the agenda is a vote on the question of whether or not to approve a teacher sabbatical. And I'll turn this over to Dr. Provost.
Can I ask one quick question? Is this, sorry, is this going to be online?
Yes.
It is online?
It will be online tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Awesome.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Sabbatical. So, in your packet, you have a request from Rob Adams from Jackson Street School to take a sabbatical. You'll notice that the date on this is March 16th, which is beyond the deadline for a sabbatical. However, I would encourage the committee to consider not rejecting it out of hand solely on the basis of its untimeliness. I did tell Mr. Adams that the budget had been developed without taking into account a request for a sabbatical. And if he was interested in taking it as an unpaid sabbatical, which would also mean it's an unbenefited sabbatical, that I would support affording him the other benefits the sabbatical provides, which is to be able to maintain seniority and to be able to have an, I'm not sure where this individual is on the steps. But if you look at, if you look at the substance of the proposed sabbatical, it's very worthy. He will be at the Charles Darwin Research Station, not only enhancing his understanding of science, but also working on some computer programming. So, I think it certainly is within the spirit of what sabbaticals are meant to be. But unfortunately, we're just not in a position where we can pay it. And he is, he is interested in taking it as an unpaid, an unbenefit sabbatical if the committee approves.
When was the deadline for the request?
I believe, I believe it's sometime in January.
That's per the NACE contract?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So...
I'd like...
Sure.
Is there a precedent on this?
There have been sabbaticals granted in the past, although it was, came through the timeline that's, you know, outlined in the contract. The idea being that if, if the committee, the district knows about it by January, it could be incorporated into a budget in terms of, you know, substitute and, you know, all the other factors that it would create.
Right. Is this the first one that's come up past the deadline?
Certainly.
In all these months.
During my time as well, I believe I've only experienced one sabbatical request. Let's turn it over to Ms. Minnick.
I have no concept. I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Okay.
One that we did approve last year?
Yeah.
Was the first one in a long time. The first one requested.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there any downside to approving this, besides setting the precedence for allowing it so late?
I honestly don't see it. I mean, the, the potential downside would be if it was to be offered as a paid sabbatical because we don't have it in the budget. But I think if he's willing to take it unpaid, then there's really no downside for the district.
Ms. Henderson.
A benefit of this is this is an incredibly well-regarded, unvaluable teacher at Jackson Street who would lose seniority, and he would lose his position essentially. Is that true?
If we did not grant it...
If we were not to grant it, he would...
The only other option would be for him to resign.
Right.
Or to not go.
So, that's a big downside for the district, in my opinion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sabbatical without pay, but with maintaining his place and all the other benefits that he's allowed to maintain.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Minnick.
Does the association have any problem with making that kind of decision? Does that put them in an awkward position?
I don't know.
Well...
Sorry to ask.
No, it's fine. Yeah. We certainly, this is not the first time we are, we encounter, you know, requests that are made where a deadline hasn't been met, and we do have the discretion. So, okay. Any other questions or discussions about this? So, there's been a motion made and seconded? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is adopted, and Mr. Adams will be heading off to the Galapagos. That should be exciting for him and his family. So, the, the next item on our agenda is a report from Ms. Minnick and the Rules and Policy Subcommittee, as well as at least four votes on some of the policies that have been percolating through that committee. The bullying and harassment revised, the policy adoption revised, the budget transfer authority revised, and the public gifts to the schools revised are all up for a vote tonight. And then, we have first readings on school-based management, the format for SIPs, the social media and electronic communication, and the graduation requirements. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Minnick.
All right. The first one is policy ACAC, bullying and harassment. It was presented to you at the last meeting. The only changes in that were housekeeping involved with updating definitions that finally came down from the state so that our policy was in alignment with state definitions, the wording that they use. So, my recollection is that there were no questions or concerns about that policy when it was presented last time. So, if, I guess I would move to, that the board, that the school committee approved the bullying and harassment policy ACAC as presented.
Second.
And recommended by the Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion regarding that motion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that policy is adopted.
Okay, I would also move, and the Rules and Policy Subcommittee recommends, approval of policy adoption policy BGB, which was presented also at our last meeting. In that particular one, there was a, some changes in language and, by request, the, when the policies were sent to you the last time, they were, they had, you know, they were redlined or, or had yellow highlight to show the language that would be included or what was being changed. By request, we've sent them out so that they read the way they would read if they're approved with your current, with the packet for this meeting. So, I can't tell you exactly what was changed, but...
I thought we were going to get a vote. Actually, I thought the idea was to send along it with the yellow and then send along, like, right afterwards, the actual adoption of the policy.
Somebody who's more prepared than I am, I can tell you that the, there was a sequence, it's listed here, the sequence of what was going on. There was, the change to the policy was to eliminate wording that says that we could abbreviate the, we could vote to abbreviate the above sequence to meet emergency conditions or to expedite routine matters. It put that into two sentences instead, so that we can, I'm not even sure why, just for clarification, I think.
But the main purpose of this policy was to, in some way, streamline our policy adoption process?
There is one other thing that was deleted, and that's the big difference. I'm sorry, I missed that. It was, the second paragraph, it said, "Presented as an agenda item to the committee in the following sequence at successive meetings." And I think it was unclear because it does say, the first item there is that it will be distribution with the agenda, and that had been interpreted as being its own meeting, that it would go out with an agenda for one meeting, then it would be considered at the next meeting, and it would be voted at a third meeting. And it was making our policy adoption process take three months, when ideally, it should only take two months, which would be distribution with the agenda and information at one meeting, and then vote the next month at the following meeting. So, that's the, probably the biggest change to this policy.
Excellent.
So, and to my knowledge, there were no questions or concerns about this, unless somebody wants to make an amendment right now.
Did you move to?
I think I did.
Why don't you go ahead?
I thought I moved it.
She did, okay. And has there been a second?
Yes. She did it, I did it.
There just was now, so, seconded. Any other questions about this? Okay, all those in favor of adopting this policy change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the policy on policies is adopted.
Okay. The next one on the agenda, so I would like to move, and the Rules and Policy Committee recommends, approval of the revised budget transfer authority policy DBJ.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Budget transfer authority. I do not know what, oh. Part of it had to do with eliminating, making the superintendent solely responsible for approval of transfers and things like that. We have now allowed for, for principals, I believe? Am I correct?
I think the other...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the other one. Sorry, that's the gift one.
Yeah, the other one to do with not granting authority for both transfers being done in order to create a new position.
It's sort of like it took all of the, all of this stuff right here and rewrote it. So, but it has to do with the authority at the end of the year for closing the budget to allow for transfers that are in excess of $10,000 or transfers being done to create a new position or program. Leaves the ability to do that with only the superintendent, and then it says, however, that it doesn't have to come, excuse me, if it's in excess of $10,000 or if it creates a new program, it has to come to the school committee. The superintendent can approve them if they don't, if they don't, except for those two exclusions. However, in the case of closing the budget at the end of the year, we'd like to let the superintendent and the policy states make those transfers without respect to the above exclusions. And there was a question raised at our last meeting regarding those restrictions, and I think Laura wanted to know, why did we need to get rid of both of those restrictions? Because really, we shouldn't be doing a transfer that creates a new program or a position. It really is only the $10,000 limit. So, I think it would be wonderful if she would create an amendment that stated that. Basically, I think you could do that by moving to amend the proposed policy in the last paragraph where it says, "Without the above restrictions." If you just say, "Without the above $10,000 limit to transfer funds to close the fiscal books."
So, I'm supposed to make the amendment?
Well, you were the one who brought it up the last time. Somebody, anybody could make that suggestion, except that I already just recommended the policy as it was proposed.
Okay, so I'm saying, I moved to amend...
Yes.
...budget transfer authority policy to state in the last, that before the end of each fiscal year, the school committee shall vote and grant the superintendent or his or her designee the authority without the $10,000 restriction to transfer funds to close the fiscal year books. Second.
Okay. So, is that, that captured the amendment? Okay, so there's been amendment made and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Here is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion that's on the floor to adopt the policy has now been amended, and now we're back to the main policy as amended. Any further discussion on that? Hearing, oh, Ms. Minnick?
I just want to note that it does say before the end of the fiscal year, we have to take a vote. So that should be a routine vote every year in June, that we vote to do that. I don't know if we routinely do that, but it should be on our list of things to...
Okay, all those in favor of this policy as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is adopted. Next, go ahead.
Next is public gifts to the schools. At our last meeting, it was presented to you, and it had to do, this was the one that now includes principals can accept things. Let's see. I want to go through this right. It's... And I really, I, I think that was in there before, actually. It says that the school committee will have the authority to accept all gifts. And I think we've proposed is that the superintendent will have the authority to accept all gifts and equipment for the schools with a total value not to exceed $1,000. And gifts with a value greater than $1,000 will be presented to the school committee. And further, it says the principals will have the authority to accept all gifts with a total value not to exceed $1,000 from their respective PTOs. So, that's the change, is that all gifts and also used to come to us. And now, gifts less than $1,000 can be approved by the superintendent, and gifts from PTO, less than $1,000 can be approved by a principal. It also, we added that the district reserved the right to dispose of any donated property that's no longer needed or considered too costly to maintain. And it taught, it also talks about the ability for a gift to be used for the donor's intended purpose without further appropriation. The previous policy language was somewhat confusing, and so we cleaned that up. And finally, it said that a report of all the gifts accepted by the superintendent would be presented publicly to the school committee on a regular basis. And my recollection is that someone had a concern about that particular language, and the amendment to that might theoretically be, in that last paragraph of that policy, a report of the gifts accepted by the superintendent and/or the principals will be presented publicly to the school committee at the next or at the subsequent monthly meeting, rather than on a regular basis. So if somebody would like to make a motion to amend the policy...
I'll make a motion to amend the policy to include that.
So that was to add, and/or principals, and then to change on a regular basis.
Yeah, we, there hadn't been an original motion yet, so...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's true. So, I move, and the Rules and Policy Committee recommends acceptance of the revised policy KCD, public gifts to the schools.
Second.
Second.
Okay, now, if somebody wants to make that...
I would like to make the amendment to state in the last line, the report that is accepted by the superintendent and/or the principals will be presented publicly to the school committee on a regular basis.
No.
Actually, at the next...
At the next.
Subsequent monthly meeting.
That's what I wanted. All right, at the next school meeting.
At the subsequent monthly meeting.
Yeah, okay. Did you get that, Laura?
She's the one who made it up.
Oh, she, she's definitely got it. Okay. Okay, Ms. Henderson seconds. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the amendment is accepted, so now we're back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on the overall policy? Mr. Moore?
I have a couple of questions about the very first paragraph. I don't know, maybe it's clear enough to everybody, but I was curious about the part about when the gift is of educational value. So does that mean the superintendent does not have the authority to accept all gifts and equipment to the schools if it's not of educational value? So, I mean, you can picture a thing, it wouldn't be of educational value, like a sign or, you know, a memorial sort of thing outside the building, you know, not really a pride of school. And I just wondered what that, why we have that language in there in the first place, you know, of educational value. Because, you know, and maybe we'd be better off without it, but I don't know, maybe people had a reason for it.
Didn't you make an amendment before we approved it? You have to start over again.
Well, no, we haven't approved the whole thing yet.
Oh, oh, oh.
Find out if you're making a, if there's a really good reason for having that phrase.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Dr. Broome?
I think there is a good reason. On any given day, I get between a dozen and 20 offers of free things for the schools, which often have very little educational value and often very long strings attached. So, I think the essence of this is to say that the superintendent should exercise discretion and not accept things that are not going to be in the best interest of the school.
Right, but that's, that would be implied, you have the authority to accept or reject anyway, right? But I just wonder, maybe it's, maybe it's just the drafting thing, because it's sort of, it's implied, it sort of ties into the $1,000. You know, it sort of ties, it has a condition, you know.
Yeah, so, so in other words,
I don't know.
Am I able to accept, or is the committee able to accept gifts of over $1,000 that have no educational value? Is that what you're saying?
Which we might do, actually.
So does there need a period in that sentence somewhere?
Yeah.
To break that up?
Something. I'm just curious about it, it struck me as...
I think anything we argue to have educational value, I think we could, you know, if that's your question was.
And that's so subjective.
My question is sort of why, yeah, why is it, why is it in that particular sentence, I guess?
Why is it that?
I, I sort of think that it was designed to repeat what was in the first sentence. Yes, and I think that it was then designed to repeat that same language in different words, but, right, it does make it unwieldy.
We think this is the MASC language, so it may have...
Doesn't make it right.
And I agree with that.
No, I think it was designed to reiterate the same thing.
As opposed to clarity, you know, when I read it.
Why can't we just cut out that last part of when the gift is of educational value?
Right, because...
Or to, or to just use the same words again, and say the superintendent will have authority to accept all educationally appropriate gifts and equipment for the schools with a total value.
Awesome.
Okay, so you can be, you can make that amendment, make that motion to amend?
She made the first motion.
It doesn't matter. Go ahead. You can, you can make the...
So, I move that we amend the policy to delete the words, when the gift is of educational value, and insert words earlier in that sentence, says, "all educationally appropriate gifts and equipment" for the schools with a total value not to exceed $1,000.
So there's been a, there's been another amendment made, seconded?
I'm sorry, though.
Yeah.
Can you explain that last one? Are you saying educational value to that principal's statement? Are you adding that?
No.
No, okay.
No. The sentence will now read, "the superintendent will have the authority to accept all educationally appropriate gifts and equipment for the schools with a total value not to exceed $1,000 in the name of the school committee, period." Gifts with a value greater than $1,000 will present, be presented to the school committee for approval.
Are you maintaining the first sentence, then?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, Mr. Moore is going to second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so now, the, we're back to the main motion as twice amended. Any other amendments or?
No. It's still in the first paragraph.
This is the gift that keeps on giving.
That's right. So now we're back down to the principals who have the authority to accept all gifts. Apparently, they don't have to be educationally appropriate. I mean, I just, you know, again, I just, I hated that.
But they could accept a gift from the PTO for a luncheon for their teachers.
Exactly. And then why shouldn't the superintendent be able to accept those kind of gifts also? That's why I don't, I'm not happy really with this educationally appropriate thing entirely, as it being like a threshold you have to clear. It seems like if it's a gift and it's a value to the schools, okay. I know, I just don't understand, I just, I mean, I know the MASC proposed it apparently, but I just don't understand that, that threshold language.
Might just have to let it go.
From one attorney to another. Sorry.
And I may let it go. But that was, that was my commentary on this. I'm happy with this, I just, I read it.
Is this something you...
I agree with him. We worry about periods and stuff. I do agree with, with Mr. Moore, he's making a very valid point, even though I'm on the Rules and Policy and we didn't see this, but it makes sense.
So would it be your interpretation that if it, if it was a non-educationally appropriate gift, that any gift of that kind would just have to come to the school committee?
Well, the, the principal could accept it if it was less than $1,000, all gifts. If it's from the PTO, right?
If it's from the PTO.
But then, I mean, that's why I'm wondering, it causes you to need to have an interpretation, whereas if you just didn't say it, you know?
Could we say just appropriate, I mean, all appropriate gifts?
Need to have an interpretation.
Well, so then aren't we subjected, even if it says appropriate, what's appropriate? It's not appropriate, our ideas are all...
Even more subject.
If we give the superintendent the authority to accept gifts, that means he has authority to reject gifts. And trust his judgment, that's what we're saying. We're saying for less than a thousand, or $1,000 or less, we're, we're saying it's okay. Even if we think it's maybe wasn't the best thing to accept, well, okay, it was less than $1,000, it's like, you know. I mean, that's what we're saying, and then to throw in this little kind of...
Okay, how about this? If you delete the word "all," it doesn't really change it, but it kind of changes it.
Right. But it doesn't deal with my other problem with the educationally appropriate.
Yeah, but it, it...
Softens it a little bit, broadens it. So, is there, is there a desire to amend that, to make a further amendment? We could also ask the superintendent to report back to us in a year on how this policy is functioning, whether he's getting lots of unappropriate...
Educationally inappropriate.
Yes.
That's right, it may not come around for another eight years.
Right, this being to go through, so...
No, you know, actually, you know, where I would be, would be saying something like, appreciates all gifts, the very first thing, instead of educationally appropriate, all gifts consistent with, you know, the mission or vision of the school district. You know, because I think that's more like the kinds of things we want to accept. We don't want to accept stuff that undermines us or distracts us. But they don't really have to be educational, they can be, you know, supportive.
I gave you wording like that.
So I don't know. But I'm not sure I want to bother with that, because you guys did, I mean, the committee did spend some time, and I do approve it, I mean, it makes sense.
We spent time on the $1,000 and whether principals should do it or not, and stuff like that. We didn't, that first few lines was from MASC, we couldn't mess with that.
Okay, well, then I'm just going to do that. I'll make a, I'll make a proposal and amendment.
So now we have to undo even what we just did?
We proposed, the first sentence read, "the Northland School Committee appreciates all gifts to the district, all, all, all gifts consistent with the district's mission."
Do we have to come up with wording right this second? Wouldn't you rather think about it?
I would rather think about it.
Is there, is there a reason that we have to?
We can table it.
This is around eight years of wording.
Maybe longer.
I'm just, I just don't know why we have to do, he has to come up with wording off the top of his head right this second.
We can, we can postpone.
We wouldn't have had to approve that. One of those booster club can know the art party thing for $400 tonight, but we did it as a lump batch, so, I mean, it's not, but I mean, that would have been something that now would fall to the superintendent to do. So, I don't want to leave this policy forever, but it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be a big problem for us to table it for a month and you could come back...
It's going to be more than a month, because we're not meeting again until July.
What?
No, for the Rules and Policy Committee.
No, no, we're not saying send it back to the committee, he just wants to...
Just to him to do that.
Talking about tabling it back at our next meeting, and by then he will have developed a language, the language for his amendment that he's going to make at that meeting.
He feels...
But we have to move to table it?
Someone has to...
We're not, we're not going to table it, we're going to postpone consideration until next meeting.
Okay.
Is that, so is that allowed?
Yeah, sure, so we're just going to, we're just going to, we're just going to postpone consideration until next month.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone consideration of the public gift to the school policy until next month, when we have the opportunity to...
So we'll pick up where we left off, all the seconds, so that we're sort of like timeout until the next meeting. So all the amendments and everything to date are, we'll pick right up where we left off.
Okey dokey.
Then I promise I'll let it go.
Okay.
Let go?
Um, we didn't...
Yeah, so there's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
To, to do what?
To postpone until the next...
Sorry, yes, aye.
He seconded it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll move on now to the first reading on four other items.
The first one of those is CFD, school-based management. And if you read through that, you will see that the recommendation is to pretty much just kind of ax most of our existing policy in favor of writing some other language. And I might even ask the superintendent to help me on this one. The, we already cite the law, there are some things in the law, and there was a lot of stuff in there that was not included in the law. There's a lot of stuff in there that's not our purview to determine, and so we're recommending a more streamlined policy. Maybe you want to add something to that.
I, I think you did it perfectly. The, the changes here are all recommended on the basis of not creating additional hoops to jump through that are not required for school councils. And the reason, the rationale for that is that every school has a very different context, and the process of seating the council may be different in a 900-seat, a 900-student high school than it is at a 290-student elementary school. And so, this proposal maintains all of the required components of the school, of the school council law, but takes out all the flourishes that were added at a previous time of this policy's life.
So, I already spoke with the superintendent about this, but the only concern I had about this was that, I think it's great that each school has its own, is, can independently decide what their process is, whether they're having elections or recruiting volunteers, or how they're working. But I think that that process needs to be transparent and advertised by the school principal as to this is how we will, we have this many positions open, this is how those positions will be filled. Because I think that you run into a problem sometimes where the principal thinks that there's no one interested in filling a position, so they ask someone, and someone else was like, hey, why didn't you ask me to do it? And so I feel like it needs to definitely be advertised that we are looking to fill these positions. I don't know that it needs to be in here, but I feel that that's a really important component.
The school council needs to be advertised? I thought they all were voted on. I thought, no?
No, it's different for all the schools.
Wow, okay, because Ryan wrote what they do is they...
Well, that's what the policy was. That's what the policy was, I think, right? But the policy wasn't necessarily being followed, because people weren't actually running for the school council at all of the schools.
Mr. Moore?
I have another comment. It's, I don't know if this policy is the right place to put it, but regarding the whole, the question of fragmentation, you know, one of the things we want to work on is, is collaboration between all the different ways, all of our different schools. And, I mean, an example would be this last year, where the elementary schools worked on one handbook for the elementary schools. And I don't know, you know, the school councils are required to be independent and just for their school, but at the same time, I think there'd be real value in them in some way formalizing, you know, institutionalizing communication between them. And I don't, so maybe this policy would be the place to add some kind of language, to, you know, to institutionalize, I don't know, some sort of, you know, semi-annual communication between them.
But that was there and they took it out.
Right, because it's not part of, and it's also not part of the law.
Oh.
So, so this is, this is, I really think this is great to have a stripped-down, basic thing. And so I'm a little, that's why I'm a little hesitant about saying, I don't know if it's got to be in this policy or not, because I like this, it's cleaner. But on the other hand, I think part of the problem with the law is precisely, is it sort of sets up these schools as being, you know, elbows out, you know? And it doesn't provide any mechanisms for them to be in communication with each other, which I think is really valuable within the district. So, I don't know, it's just something to think about, I guess.
Okay.
I suggest you think about it and come back with amendment to this next month, if you...
I don't want to do so little, you know, we used to have a bunch of administrators in the audience, but I don't want to impose anything on the, on the principals that isn't, you know, appropriate either. I'm not, that's why I'm hesitant about it, but I think it's a subject I'd like, it's more like a conversation. a subject I'd like, it's more like a conversation that I think that administrators should, maybe the administrators should think about, if they want to put something in the policy.
So I have Ms. Fallon, and then Ms. DeVal.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the only other thing that I was a little bit sad to see was that initially, it was in the policy that they were to post minutes, or make them available, that wasn't happening, and now, the new wording is that they will make the minutes available to the superintendent, who will then make them available to us on request, but it doesn't say anything about, well, what about a parent who wants to know what happened at that meeting?
Dr. Probst?
It actually says that the school council meetings will be subject to the open meeting law, which means that they need to maintain minutes, and they need to produce them on request for anybody, not just school committee members.
Okay, but I'm saying, so they're not automatically produced, they have to go, I just, we post hours, I wonder if it would be simple, if they're going to be producing them, and they're going to give them to you, why can't they post them?
It would make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, because the open meeting law just means you have them.
Right, I'm just saying, it seems logical to put it on the website, and then, also, schools could compare what's going on at the other schools.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's not a, it's not a requirement of the open meeting law, but it could certainly be a best practice or a policy that-
Right, but I don't know that it needs to go in, I'm not sure what, I don't know how, if, I feel like if it doesn't go in it, then we're just saying it, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But on the other hand, we've stripped down the language to add more in, seems counterintuitive.
Same problem.
Well, if we're stripping down the language to get rid of things that we don't think are necessary, I mean, but we're adding something that we do value, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
I think we're taking out what's not required, but maybe putting in something that we might want to see, it may not be required, but it might make sense for Northampton.
Right, but can I get my turn?
Ms. DeVal.
Thank you. What I was gonna say about that is, I'm not really sure that it's, it's a place to actually have it in a policy, as much as a best practice, and something that we work towards culturally changing, and, within the schools, not necessarily just at the school council, but start to make it a priority, and an importance for the different schools to get together, and I'm not sure that we should say you have to do it twice a year, and actually have it in the policy, but, you know, see if we can encourage more sharing, and, you know, I just hate to just tell them they have to do it, I'd rather have them want to do it, and I think if we encouraged more of that environment, of cultural sharing, of the advantages, then they probably would want to do it, and I don't think that we would have to set it up as far as making them do it, since it's not part of the law, that's just my opinion on that.
Okay, I think we have two different things going, but Ms. Minnick?
I'm okay with making them post the minutes.
Yeah.
As far as making them get together, I think that there's an intermediate step, you can say, the school committee encourages, you know, school councils to meet jointly to discuss, you know, issues of significance to all of the buildings, or whatever, some kind of frothy, foamy language, yeah.
You know, we could encourage that, we can also encourage the PTOs, and we just, that's what I'm saying, we start to establish a different type of cultural expectation.
Well, that's a different policy, that's a different policy, and so, I, I'm encour- yes, and encouraging is fine, it doesn't specify that they have to do it, but it certainly invites them to do something, and it leaves the door open for it.
So my only question is, if you're, because some of the language we took out was that they were also going to meet with the school committee once a year, so if you were encouraging them to meet with each other, are you also going to encourage them to meet with us? Why did that practice stop, or was I just not clear?
It started, it started because there were some budget concerns, and also because school councils were brand-new, and we thought that it would be, and also because they had not yet identified the district improvement plan, and the school improvement plan at the very beginning, I think, or not, in the way it's thought of now, and so, we formed something called, I think it was the Collaboration Committee, that was two members of the school committee, and representatives from each of the school councils could get together and meet with the school committee, and it, it kind of just didn't happen very, sort of, it was even less effective than the conference committee, where we meet with the city council, so it was just like, we were pointing people to a committee that didn't do anything, so, we've gotten rid of the Collaboration Committee, and so I think we got rid of the language saying that we would absolutely meet with them, but I think if the school councils, individually, or jointly, came to the school committee and said, we would like to meet with you, I think we would either put them on the agenda, or we would have a special public forum, where we would meet with them if they had an issue that warranted our attention.
That's what we should have, is forums.
Ms. Decker?
I would just like to say that school councils aren't, people aren't paid to be on school councils, and I would really hate to make all of these things, I don't know, mandatory is the right word, or even recommended, or suggested, suggested, to make people not want to be on school councils. So I think that we, we should be careful of that, I think the ideas are great, but I think we should keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Ms. Hennessy?
I was gonna say exactly the same thing, around the support expectation, like, if, I know that these parents on these councils are overworked, and if we start saying, take minutes, post them, do this.
But they have to.
They, they take minutes, but I, I know there's extra steps sometimes, around like, get it onto the website, that's for me, like, I know it sounds really like the little needle, but I think it needs to come more naturally, they pose, they have them now, I agree, but if we start ham, putting out expectations, like, you have to do this and this with it, I do worry, at the level of the, the number of people who are volunteering, just if we're imposing it, I believe in collaboration and everything, but we need to offer some supports, that's all I'm saying.
I've been to the school councils at the different schools, and you're welcome to go, also, and go in and see, but I would totally agree with Ms. Hennessy, what they're doing is pretty awesome, just to consider, I mean, what we do here, we have a lot of, you know, backup, and the superintendent, and everything else, and direction, they have the principal, but the dedication that comes from those parents, and the brain power, I don't know, but it's just pretty awesome, that they do get overwhelmed by how much more, and how long the meetings go, and everything else.
Right, yeah, my only suggestion is, if they're taking minutes anyway, and they were disseminating, more people might be interested in what they're doing, and you might get more volunteers.
That would not be something we would expect school council members to do, it would be, I mean, they would not, we would not be giving them access to the website to update them, it would be something they'd have to get to the, through their principal would have to upgrade, update it, or get it to Angelo, or somehow they'd have to-
Yeah, I don't know how it could work, or even if, I don't know, it was-
Well, the principal is the one that is at the meeting and runs the meeting, so, but not necessarily one that takes the minutes, obviously, so, maybe they could get it to the principal who would approve it, and then they can disseminate that information, the principal's, you know, the paid position.
So, tonight is just a first reading, so, these are the kinds of ideas that you should think about for when it comes up for a vote at our future meeting, so, any other ideas or discussion about this?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention another thing, it has happened in the past, was when Budget and Property, I believe, didn't- Budget and Property posted to school councils? And they gave, it was like a hearing or something, almost, like where each school sort of presented something or other to Budget and Property, as some sort of a part of-
Sort of budget process.
The budget process, I'd say, it was a public thing, it was the school councils, and that, I don't know exactly what its derivation was, whether it was this the old policy, or whether it was just something that was coming up.
It was the fact that school councils are responsible for helping the, first of all, as Carrie pointed out, being a school council member is kind of a thankless job, they don't get paid, and really, their position is totally advisory to this principal, they carry weight, they are, they have a big responsibility for representing their entire school community, but they don't, they can't force anything, the school committee can take a vote, and if the superintendent doesn't do what we want-
You're gonna do that for the camera?
But if the, if the school council takes a vote, and the principal doesn't do exactly what they want, there's no, there's no fallout from that, I mean, except that people are unhappy, but, I mean, so, really, it is, so, asking the school council members, you know, to do something, it's, I guess that's my point, so, I'd forgotten now what the question was.
He was asking about a-
The question, I was just sort of saying that there's something-
So, yeah, they are responsible for advising the principals on the budget, and helping to determine which, if you have to make, you know, the bad choice, which one is more important, or how do, which things are more important to your school, if you have to lose a staff member, how would you want to see that happen, so, and when they had similar concerns, we invited all of the school councils to come to us and say, this is what the effect will be if you cut this thing, this is what the effect will be if you do that thing, so, we did have them, we did schedule and invite the school councils to come and represent their schools, and we can always, there's nothing in our policy that precludes our doing that, but it's also, we, I agree sort of with Carrie, that we shouldn't mandate that they do something, I think we should just encourage them to do it, if it seems like there's a critical mass, but-
I think we should just start to work on that, just as a cultural change in all of it, encourage-
Well, so, we can debate that, again, I guess, with the next-
That achievements was talking about.
At the next meeting, if somebody wants to make the motion, then we'll discuss it at that point.
Okay, so can we move on to the next policy?
The next one is the Format for School Improvement Plans, and that's CFDA, and interestingly, our proposed revisions include changing the name of that, because Format for School Improvement Plans, it's, the administration feels that it is no longer necessary for us to outline the exact format that they have to follow, it doesn't have to have an introduction, and pictures, and a summary of what you did last year, and so forth, and so on, each school should be able to put together a school improvement plan the way that works for that school, so, again, you will see that almost the entire original policy has been zapped out, and wording from, I think, a suggested MASC policy, is that correct? Two different, two different policies came together, that's right, two different policies came together to form this, the recommended new policy, that's mostly all in yellow.
Okay, any questions about this on first reading?
Straightforward, yeah.
Okay, why don't we move to the social media and electronic communications?
Okay. Social media, which is, I guess, it's new name, because it used to have the name Facebook and stuff, and we actually discussed it, and decided that Facebook is daily being surpassed by something else, and that we can't even predict what the next new thing down the pike will be, so, we just made it say, Social Media and Electronic Communications, and this is, we do have a policy right now on authorized u, an authorized user policy for staff, and there is something that students, or parents of students, sign, that's included in the handbook, but those were both about actual use of school internet accounts, and their, you know, stuff like that, this is about stuff that could happen outside of what goes on in our schools, and stuff that is completely outside of an educational environment, but needs to be appropriate, and so, we're looking to sort of, I think the, the sentence that says that, in fact, the very first sentence, I think, says what we're trying to accomplish here, we believe that educators should model professional, appropriate, and respectful digital communication skills, certainly, we hope that students will learn from that, and also behave in that same manner, so, so this is, in part, I think the original impetus from the, for this, we drafted a policy a couple of years ago, but it was, it was sent back for some further investigation or something, and it never came to the full school committee for approval, this is, and, this is another attempt, and again, this came, it's a compilation of two separate policies from MASC, I believe, that we took language from, so, I think, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
I do have a question about, though, in the first paragraph, it says, the superintendent of school principals will annually educate staff members, and then the last sentence of that paragraph says, the training we'll give, is it implying a specific training, or a general, this training of?
So, I imagine the way this will happen is, along with all the rest of the required trainings that have to happen on the first day of school, the principal will hand out the social media policy, and say, please read and understand this, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Fallon?
I was just not clear on part two, letter E, it says, teachers will not give out their private cellphone or home phone numbers without prior approval of the district, is that to parents and students, or just students?
I would think that it really should be, just should not give out their private telephone numbers, if there's a reason why, if there's a reason why a parent needs to contact a teacher on the teacher's home phone, or the teacher's personal cell, then I just think they should make the principal aware of that, you can get into tricky situations, when you're doing home-to-home communication, instead of home-to-school communication.
Ms. DeVal?
Okay, Ryan Road used to, the teachers at the elementary school, maybe other schools do, would call, and when they call, they'd call from their home, and then you have their phone number, I mean, that's, that's just, and also, not only that, but I'm thinking of it, when I go to the parent-teacher nights at the beginning, the open house, the beginning of the year, they give out their phone numbers, quite often, the teachers do, for the parents, and, you know, not to get, but so that we can get ahold of them if we have questions, and, I mean, I have lots of teachers' phone numbers, and not because of this position.
I think that the better idea would be for teachers to give their school telephone number, or their school email.
They do give their school email, but the problem with the school telephone number is that they don't, you can't contact them, and also, most of them do their business, I mean, they're not gonna sit here after school, and when they can go home and make their phone calls, you know, I mean, I agree, but-
Well, there's no prohibition in this policy for teachers calling a parent at their home from their home, and you're right, that may result in the disclosure of a telephone number, what this says is that teachers won't actively be distributing their home telephone numbers.
Ms. Hennessy?
I think that's really tricky, because there, I know, when I'm calling home, which I usually do at night, that parents are getting my phone number, and I, I just think, we're, in one way, we're saying, again, this is going back to this, expectations and support, we're wa, the fourth standard is, or third standard is family outreach, we're demanding our teachers to contact families, I mean, I'm happy that I get calls from, at five o'clock at night, but they're not calling from school, so I know their numbers, if we're, I don't want a teacher, a first-grade teacher to start worrying, they don't want to call me at home.
Right.
I really, that's worrisome, I think the student is really clear, and there are really clear ways that they would get my cellphone, or the teacher's cellphone, but parents, I think, I think this is really tricky, and it's, I don't want to give, make a rule, or say something, and then every teacher starts breaking it, feeling like, and they're doing it for the best of the kids and education.
I would agree with Ms. Hennessy, just in the fact that we're encouraging communication, and we are encouraging it back and forth, and also, trust, if the teacher felt that they wanted to give out, and they had that trust to do that, because there's a lot of different issues, I mean, there's issues where, I mean, you know, maybe we wouldn't want, in some of the schools, like, I can think of that, because I was a big volunteer over at Ryan Road, and some of the issues that came up actually required the teachers to be calling, and, and having the phone number, so that the parents felt comfortable calling and, and talking personal, because when you talk about parents that have, try not to reveal any information, when you talk about parents that have, like, maybe a lower education, the whole thing is a little bit intimidating to them anyhow, the whole idea of education, and the idea of calling a school, for some of the people that I've known, is, is impossible, and it's not something that they would do, and they're very impressed when the teacher calls them, there's just a lot of information that the teachers might want to know about, you know, the kind of day somebody's having, if a child's of this special need, or special behavioral issues, and, I mean, it's not something that's out there tangible, it's me trying to not release any information, because there's more than one, and two, and three students that I know of, personally.
Ms. Minnick?
I think some interesting points- I, I think some interesting points have been raised, but I'm also still concerned about the appropriateness of it. I, I understand that everybody's got caller ID, so if you, you know.
You can block your phone.
You can block it, yes.
Well, why don't we put that in?
You don't care, you know, it's just like, I, I guess, I guess. Also, though, we, superintendent, just as there's a hierarchy for the school committee, you may, if you have a child in the school, you can call the principal and say, "I'm concerned about my student." But if you are calling a school for any other reason related to your school committee service, you just want to find out what programs they have there or what teacher is in charge of this or what, you know, what their lunch schedule is. You really should follow the hierarchy, the protocol that says, "You contact the superintendent's office and let that person, let someone know that you wish to contact a school so that they are aware." Because no superintendent wants to think that the school committee people and the principal are talking about him or her behind their back. So, I mean, it's just, it's, it's protocol, it's appropriateness and it's, it's just a, it, it, I know it sounds silly. I see the look on your face. It sounds goofy, but it really is the way things should happen.
Well, I get invited to schools all the time, so are you saying in this case that I should call Dr. Provost?
If you have been invited by a principal to attend a school for a special event, that's fine. If, if, and one might assume that other school committee members have received the same kind of invitation then. But if you are talking, if you are initiating any kind of conversation with the super, with someone at a school that's not related to your student, I think that you should be going through the central office. I think that's just appropriate protocol. That's, and maybe everybody else here thinks I'm old and out of date and that we don't need to do that anymore. But I think that that's what's, that was what I was, that's what I learned, that's what I was taught, and I think it still holds.
Will you say specific events? So, how about when we've been invited by the librarian or by people at North Hampton High School? Do you think that at that point, when we do decide, five months down the road, to take up on that, we need to go and, and talk to Dr. Provost and stuff?
I, I will leave that to your discretion. If we have been invited.
I still understand, Lisa, I don't understand, I really just don't understand what, what you're trying to say as far as, I think that teachers are adults and can figure it out themselves. So, I'm not, I, maybe I'm like on another page. I don't get it.
I guess what I'm saying is that I believe that there is a protocol for school committee people going into the school and it should be going through the superintendent. And I similarly believe that if a parent wants to contact a teacher, it should be going through the school office. And whether that's calling the principal and saying, "I need to talk with this teacher," or whether the, the school telephone numbers have, for each teacher, have been published, you can contact your teacher directly, but the initial contact is going through the school.
Okay.
And then, I suppose, if there needs to be an ongoing conversation or if a teacher believes that there's a reason for a parent to have his or her home phone number so that that parent can contact him, then maybe they just need to go into the principal's office and say, "By the way, I'm giving my phone number to this person because I believe it's important." But under no circumstance should it just like go direct and avoid the principal because someday there may be a court case that requires the principal to come in and testify about why this relationship exists, and I think the principal needs to be informed.
Have we asked the teachers how they feel as far as being?
I don't care how the teachers feel. I care about what's legal and appropriate. But we have, we have a teacher here who's giving her perspective and she's saying it's important sometimes to have that conversation.
I hear what you're saying, though. I'm saying that not the parent calling me. I'm saying that teachers call parents frequently after school hours.
And that's appropriate.
And then sometimes they expect, and then sometimes, and that's what I, and I'll take it one step further. And sometimes those teachers have expected the parents to establish, I know of that specifically is what I'm saying.
That's not what I was saying, though. I was, what I was saying is, I'm, I need to block my phone. Maybe that's what you were saying. But I've got many calls from North Hampton Public School teachers, very, I needed those calls saying, "Hey, this is how this happened today." Or, I know I call parents and say, "Your daughter did great," or you're, "I'm concerned about this." And I do it when I know they're going to be home later. So, I could block. But I'm not, I'm not saying, "Call me back on my cellphone."
Okay. So, but that's what I.
You're not saying, "Call me back on my cellphone."
No.
You're saying, "Call me back and you leave the school number or?"
I say, I leave a message and say, "You can contact me at school tomorrow. Here's my email if you have email."
Conduct Provost?
I'm just pointing out, there's nothing in this policy that requires a teacher to take proactive steps to, to protect his or her home phone or cellphone. It only says that they shouldn't be widely distributing them as the first point of contact. First point of contact should be the school. And then the teacher's free to call a parent.
Yes.
But shouldn't say, "If you, if your child has a problem, here's my home phone number. Give me a call." That's all it says.
Yeah. Okay. So, we're.
But the question was initially, should a teacher?
I think my original question was, do you mean to students or do you mean to parents or both? Like, they shouldn't distribute it at all. That's, I just didn't know if they meant they shouldn't give out their phone number to students, which just seems perfectly logical, or if it was to parents and then I was like, oh, I could see how that would be a little bit tougher.
Right.
Okay. So, did you have something to add to that?
No, I was just going to back Ms. Hennessy. Being an educator myself, you know, I oftentimes get comments from my principal or from a guidance counselor that a, a phone call home to a parent would be appropriate. And many times, because parents are working during the day, picking up the phone at 10:00 AM to call home doesn't yield the, the, you know, what the objective was. And so, you can leave a message and if it's about a student, you hope the student doesn't erase the message before the folks get home, or you call from your own home. And that leaves me to, you know, make phone calls in the evening as well on occasion in order to talk to a parent. And the teacher evaluation system now supports, you know, community involvement and parent-teacher involvement that goes beyond just a afternoon conference. It, it, it calls for a collaboration between parent and teacher and student for student success. And I think that more it's phone call.
So, if you call and they're not home on the message, do you say, "Call me back"? Because, I mean, I know that getting a hold of a teacher during school is impossible, plus they don't have the time.
More often than not, I would, I can reach a parent at home in the evening. If not, I, yeah, I ask them to call the school or that I would try back another time.
So, you don't leave your number?
No, but again, it comes up on caller ID. I, I don't recall many parents calling me back at home because I've requested that they call me the next day at school or that I would call back another time.
I've had teachers request me to call them at home because I can't get them at school. That's, I mean, my experience is like totally different.
Okay.
Well, it'll be different from now on if this policy passes.
Sure, yeah.
Is this also teachers and coaches?
It does include coaches down below.
It does below, but when it says, "Teachers will not give their private cellphones without prior approval."
Text messaging and things of that nature.
I wonder if we should go back through this policy and, and look at it because it, in terms of staff members as opposed to teachers.
Right. So, since it's in the reading, and this is just kind of a, a technical question, since it's in the first reading and we have this as an issue and you want to go back and look at it, are you talking about going back and looking at it in Rules and Policy? Or do we go back and look at it like you as the chair of Rules and Policy, look at it and then, I don't know, send it to Dr. Provost, send it to Ms. Hannah and myself? I mean, I don't know. Well, I guess he would have to do that. But what are you talking about as far as, how does that happen?
I mean, I, I think that the thing has come here for a first reading. If somebody says, "This is a policy, this policy is totally inappropriate and we think it's ridiculous and you should just start all over again," then it would go back to Rules and Policy Subcommittee. If the concerns with it are so broad and so numerous, then it would go back to Rules and Policy. If it's a simple matter of someone saying, "I think we should go through here and change the word 'teacher' to 'staff person' throughout the policy," that could be an amendment at our, and when the policy is being voted. So, I mean, I think.
I, I know you don't care what the teachers think about it, but going back to, do you think that it would, that we could ask them in some way if, if it would create undue hardships to, to not be able to say, "Just call me back"? I mean, I just think, I mean, I don't know why, but years ago, that's, they just called and they leave messages and call me back and, you know. Such and such a time is convenient for me.
I think we've heard from two teachers who said that they believed it was appropriate. If you don't reach someone to leave a message saying, "I was trying to reach you. Please contact me via email if you have it. Otherwise, you can try and reach me tomorrow at school and leave a message." I think that it's, I think that probably covers it. And I think that the policy, I, I don't know how you would go about getting the reaction of teachers.
Okay, well, so I'm guessing email?
I'm not going to just conduct a survey in the next month. I'm not going to ask the association to go out and conduct a survey or have a meeting and get a vote. And I'm going to go back to what I said before. I think what we're trying to do here is craft policy that needs to meet some kind of legal muster. I mean, I think we are trying to create a situation that protects all of our staff as well as the security of our students. And this is not so mu-, interestingly, this policy, somebody has focused on telephone calls. This policy was really about electronic communication.
Right.
And social media, and obviously telephones are a means of communicating social, socially but electronically perhaps, but.
Another concern, going back to the electronic, is, is without the, "Email me tomorrow." The people that I'm talking about didn't have computers.
I understand that.
So, call the school.
Anne says she leaves a message that says, "Please call me tomorrow at school and leave a message for me or if you have email, you can email me." And I, I understand that there are some people, even in this day and age, who do not have email. Now, I realize that. Most people have smartphones, but I'm not going to say all of them do. So, if you aren't able, then you call the school. And then Anne goes home that night and makes a second attempt. Hopefully, in your mess, if you, you've said, "I will be home during these hours," or, "You can reach me at this time," or, "You can call me during my lunch hour at work," or whatever it is. So, she'll make an effort to try and return the person's call by the time they said. I, I just think that this is not about what teachers think is convenient. We're in a position to make some, we're making a policy for the schools. And I don't think it's about what's convenient for others. I think it's what we believe to be the most appropriate and.
But I just want to make sure that children's communication is, is what I'm worried about. So, once, let's say we do pass this policy. Then be the step to send out a letter to all the parents stating, "We passed this policy, so don't take it personally that the teacher," I mean, not like so broad, but that, that they're not giving you the number anymore, but this is the new protocol. I mean, just so that they know.
I don't think that, people were, maybe they gave their numbers to you. I don't know. I've never had a teacher call me and say, "Here's my home phone number. Call me back."
Well, not only me, but the woman that I know of that was very poor and didn't have a computer and she had the number whose daughter had a lot of problems.
I think if a teacher makes that kind of an exception, I said before, if a teacher feels a need to make that exception, they should just notify the principal in their building what's happening so that we have a pa-, a paper trail, if you will.
Not the superintendent.
Not an electronic trail, but we have some kind of, of, of knowledge of what's going on so that they know that there is a communication happening.
Right. So, where it says, "Without prior approval of the district," we're not talking about the superintendent. The principal can be the district?
Yes, the principal can be the district. The principal should be the district for this.
Yes. Mr. Moore?
I have three comments. First one is just a, just a wordsmithing one. I think item number two says, begins improper fraternization and then it is followed by a number of points, A, B, C, D, which all are examples of proper contact. And so, I think really probably the right thing to do would just be to change that from improper fraternization to, you know.
Proper fraternization.
No, pro- proper contact, because that's what that category is. That'd be simple. Then number two regarding, so the dispute here, we, all this telephone conversation, conversation has really been about the number B, which says that all contacts have to be using the district's devices.
Oh, each contact.
Well, yeah.
It says telephone systems.
Right. Using, in other words, using the district's telephone system as opposed to using your own cellphone. And, and I think that is, that maybe should be addressed in this policy to make it, because otherwise you're in violation as soon as you do the thing where you call from home. So, maybe we want to make, add another sentence or something to that piece of the policy because I think regardless of blocking your number or not, it seems like it's a good thing to allow people to use their own phone.
It says block to call. I don't answer.
That's students. You don't want the teacher calling students.
Well, well, no, but, well, actually, sometimes it does happen because, for example, when you, for, at the athletics example is the really good one, where a practice has gotten changed or something and so there's a call goes out and, you know, oftentimes it's the coach calls the captains and then the captains make all the phone calls, but nonetheless, the coach called a captain. And, you know, and it may be happening on the weekend. It may not be really feasible to be doing it through school devices, is all I'm saying. And so, you might want to create some language that allows for this to happen without making that be.
As long as the coach called the captains and it goes out, that's fine. It's just if the player calls the coach.
Which they do. "I hate Coach. I'm not going to be there."
Which they do for that very reason.
Right.
No, what he's saying on this is that it has to go through the district's telephone system so you couldn't call from the cellphone, call the captain. Can I make a suggestion that this goes back to Rules and Policies, please? No, but, but I mean.
Well, it has to come out in Rules and Policy. It's been there forever.
I'm not saying that these aren't good, valid discussions. I'm just saying this belongs in the Subcommittee, not here.
Well, actually, it wasn't a Subcommittee and it's been in the Subcommittee a long time ago and then we never got it passed because it had that problem. So, now we need to, I mean, it can go back, but we need to hear all of this so we can go and have a direction.
Did the committee not recommend this policy out? It didn't recommend it out?
It might have, but it never got passed.
But what I'm saying is, did this, did you not recommend this out?
Yes, we did.
Last time.
And did you, what was the vote?
There was no vote. We didn't.
It was your name.
Yeah, the, what.
You had to have done some, there had to have been some step taken in the Subcommittee to send this forward to us.
What Ms. DeWolff said is that there was a policy, that this has been hanging around for a long time.
Okay.
Two years ago, it was created. I don't know who created it. Maybe it was Justice Angelo was coming and it was written. I don't know what the disposition of it. She's gone back and looked at all of the minutes and she can find no place where the policy was voted, recommended, or brought to the school committee.
I think it was brought to the school committee, but had a lot of problems.
So, that's one person's opinion. I think that what happened possibly is that in discussion in Rules and Policy, since there's no record of it being voted as a recommendation from Rules and Policy or at least no minutes that she can find, I'm guessing that it was given back to Angelo for further drafting or something. And so, I, I, I don't know what to say, but it just, it went away. So, it hasn't been like on the front burner in Rules and Policy for two years. It kind of went into la-la land for two years. And now it, because we've received a need, we, the superintendent has brought it to us and said that he would like to have a policy, so, and he used two MASC suggested policies to draft this one.
Okay.
And, and my concern when I first read it was, this sounds so negative. It says improper, invalid, interaction, in, whatever. I said, "Can we turn that on its head and make it more positive?" So, I absolutely agree with, that was, that was what my fist pump was when you said that.
I thought you was mad at me.
No, you said you had a third thing.
I would just like to direct everyone's attention. I can't even remember where I saw it, but there are a lot of legal actions pending, dealing with this issue directly with students calling teachers and there being inappropriate contact between teachers and students. So, I think that we all maybe need to look at what's going on legally speaking and, and why this policy is important and why we need to protect our teachers. And that's really what this is about.
Well, I agree with teachers and students. I mean, that makes sense. But the teachers and parents, that's the part that, that's a lot more big here.
I think we need to look at it through that lens, though, the, the entire thing.
So, you had a third one.
Sure, Ms. Moore?
My third point is really, point of information, it was spurred by some discussion about, you know, what's the appropriate way to be contacting people in the school if you're on the school committee? And I just wanted to make the point that 930 CMR 6.03, Section 4, requires that if you're on the school committee and you should advocate for a child, so particularly for your own child, with any of, any employee of the district, that you need to file a disclosure form with the city clerk. And there's a form you can get. I think I got this off of DASE's website. Or maybe I got it from the Attorney General's website, the Ethics Division. But anyway, it's a form and, and it's pretty simple. You know, your name, your position, and. You know, your name, your position, and sort of who you, who you met with and why you met with them. So in my context, it's been with, I know about it because of, you know, team meetings, IEP meetings.
So advocating for your child goes beyond having a parent-teacher conference, right?
Exactly.
Guarding your child.
So it wouldn't be like when you, so it wouldn't be if you're in the school going to a play, it wouldn't be if you're in the school going to, you know...
Volunteering in your child's class.
You know, open house. It wouldn't be for any of those things. It would be if you called up a teacher to advocate for your student, which parents do, and it could be for something perfectly innocuous. You know, you're saying, "Oh, please extend the deadline for this thing, right, because here's what happened. We went to the funeral last week and, you know." But that would be a contact with an employee of the district that you're advocating for your student and there's this state requirement that you file a disclosure form with the city clerk.
That we as a school committee member, that's what this is?
Any school committee member has to do that.
Okay.
And it, it's actually any supervisory school employee, so, and we count as a supervisory school employee for everybody in the district. Dr. Provost counts as a supervisory school employee for, not us, but for everybody downstream and so on.
And so does the ALP then?
Exactly.
Okay. Ms. Fallon?
Yeah, I'm ready to, reading every... I move to accept it as is. I actually am fully in love with the policy. I'm not kidding.
We're not voting tonight, this is first reading.
Oh, yeah, okay. But I'm like, honestly, I, I think it's well done. I think it covered, despite the improper fraternization, if you read it the right way, it actually makes perfect sense.
Let me start this.
Was ALP...
I have a simple question. I don't know what happened.
About phone numbers.
Yes, it's both. It's both, Laura, it's both.
This policy from Mass?
That's the answer.
Yes.
We got this entire policy as is?
It's a combination of two policies, 'cause the policy had been through Rules and Policy before but never voted on the school committee. It was also a combination of policies.
Okay.
So, where do we want to leave this tonight? We're not supposed to vote on it tonight, but is there, is there a, are we comfortable just counting this as a first reading, walking away from it for a little while?
I am, because if we have amendments, it'll be...
Sure, excellent.
...time to come up with them or whatever.
Okay.
So, that sounds cool.
I guess I think also that if we come back next time and we can't figure it out, she's right, this is, if it's too, if it's too broad or too in-depth, we should be going back to the committee.
Sure.
But I think we'll see that then. If the, if the amendments are quick and easy and straightforward, we can do it. If not, then we'll vote to send it back to committee then.
Let's move on to the graduation requirements for JFK.
Graduation requirements.
High school.
Oh, high school, sorry.
I F K.
Sorry.
I saw the I K F and it was like...
Wow, yeah. All right, so this policy is being revised in large part because we had a policy and we weren't doing what our policy said. And we have made changes to our curriculum already, so it's advisable that we have our policy match what we actually do. So, and then the other big changes are happening to reflect the recommendations of the P E, sub, ad hoc P E Subcommittee, Physical Education Subcommittee that Brian Labardi reported on earlier. This now shows the wellness classes as proposed by that committee, so...
Okay, any discussion of this one? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Rules and Policy. That was excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work. Okay, so now we'll move on.
I didn't think it was.
Now we will move on to the Business Administrator's Report, and I believe Dr. Provost will be providing that this evening.
Yes, I will limit my comments just to reading in the memo from Ms. Walzak to the record dated May 4th, 2015. Number one, FY15 Appropriation Report encloses a monthly expenditure report on local budget appropriation. There are accounts in deficit, as we have seen each month, but the overall budget is in good standing. I expect to bring some budget transfers to June to cover some of the larger deficits such as utilities, where we are moving expenses from school choice into the local budget for easier comparability going forward, and retirement costs, which are new to our budget this year. Two, school choice, I reported back in January that we are charging $201,324 in special ed tuitions into the school choice revolving account for four students who are choiced-in students, we, that we receive monies for and whom we will pay, and for whom we pay at a district tuition, special ed bills. Currently, we were up to five students for a total estimated tuition of one, uh, $301,352, I'm sorry, $301,352. Although this is a substantial increase, we do expect to receive higher reimbursement in FY16 because of these higher costs. That is because you get a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement for any special ed students through the choice program. And that is the financial report.
Can I ask a silly question? Is there any way the financial reports that come through, the number reports can be right-side up? Because I don't know how to flip mine.
Yeah, but then it's like...
Meaning your electronic...
But then if I don't have that computer, smarty pants. It's sideways. Okay. But I, I really, I try... Or just show me how to flip it.
Yes. Maybe we could have a tutorial on how to work...
I know it's silly, but...
No, 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 I understand.
Can't see it.
Yeah.
And you have to do it page by page.
Okay, so now we'll move on to a, a vote. This is to approve participation in the TIPS Purchasing Collaborative, and I'll ask Dr. Provost to explain that.
Sure, the TIPS Purchasing Collaborative is a national collaborative purchasing program. A number of districts belong to it. The specific purpose for joining, the recommendation to join the TIPS at this time would be to get a more competitive price for some of the equipment for our buses. It's, doesn't have a non-compete, it won't affect our ability to do anything else except purchase some bus equipment through this collaborative.
And it's free? There's no, there's no membership or anything like that to join?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the participation in the TIPS Purchasing Collaborative. Second?
Okay. Ms. Minnick?
No, scratch.
Okay, so all those in favor of, of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we are now part of the collaborative for TIPS purchasing. Next, personnel report.
In your packets, you'll see that we had three new hires in April and five substitutes, five new substitutes added to our ranks in April. We had two separations, no retirements, and one promotion transfer of Lisa Klock from JFK to Leeds.
Okay. And now the superintendent report.
On Monday, April 13th, I facilitated a parent math night here at JFK Middle School. Standing room only crowd, that included some of our committee members, had a respectful and productive conversation about the many changes to the math program that have taken place over the past several years. The slides shared in that evening's presentation are on the district website. One of the questions we discussed that evening were, how will we measure the impact of the changes? I explained that a key variable for me is whether the changes will enable more students to access the rigorous content available through AP Calculus or Statistics. Since this year's freshmen are the first cohort taking the new sequence, it'll be a few years before we know that definitively, but 99 of this year's freshmen are on track to take Calculus or Statistics as juniors. That compares to 74 students in the freshman class of 2013 and 52 students in the class of 2012. Based upon registration for next year's classes, 81 of the 99 freshmen who had doubled up in math this year will be continuing a sequence that potentially leads to Calculus in, or Statistics in the junior year. That compares to 51 students in this year's sophomore class who are still on track and 45 students in the previous sophomore class who took Statistics or Calculus this year. And based on the course requests for incoming freshmen next year, at least 114 students will be taking double math as freshmen. So I think that's, I think that's an important indicator of progress of that program. One of the messages that came back very strongly through our communication that night was the desire to have students provide anonymous feedback to their teachers on the experience in their classes. This will provide an additional dimension to our understanding of the program. Since the math night, the Joint Labor Management Educator Evaluation Committee has met twice, specifically to discuss student-teacher and feedback, including once this afternoon. A negotiation session has been scheduled between the school committee negotiating Subcommittee and NACE for June 9th. If all goes well, we may be able to bring some recommended contract language to the full committee for June. So it is, I'm hopeful, it's going to be tight, but I'm hopeful that we will be able to follow through on getting some student feedback for teachers and getting some teacher feedback for administrators. On Monday, April 27th, I gave a talk to the Ward III Neighborhood Association on Massachusetts School Finance. Topics covered included the Hancock case, Chapter 70, Circuit Breaker, Charter School, School Choice, and the federal picture, homeless student transportation, and our fiscal stability plan. I think it was a successful evening and will likely be reprising the talk for Jackson Street School and/or via video. On Wednesday, April 29th, I attended the Grin Spoon Awards with our winners Barbara Bitgood, Amareo Pareja, Michelle Subaz, and Martha Hopkins. North Hampton was well-represented, filling four tables with current staff, retirees, and family members. And I'm happy to report that we were certainly among the most raucous groups in acknowledging our honorees with our patented blue handkerchief wave. Also, our annual school choice lottery was held May 5th. We had 120 applicants for 57 available seats, which I guess I just have to comment on because we talk a lot about choice in the district and it seems kind of sad that we are turning away students for, for lack of space at the same time other people are choicing out. Also, now that the root causes have been identified, we'll be entering the final phase of my entry plan, which is the development of a new district improvement plan. We have reserved May 21st, 28th, June 4th, June 15th, and June 22nd from 6:30 to 8 o'clock in the JFK library. I would very much like to have two school committee members join us. If you're interested in participating in this work, please let me know.
Could you run those dates one more time?
Sure. All, all times will be 6:30 to 8 o'clock and all meetings will be in the JFK library. The dates are May 21st and 28th, and then June 4th, 15th, and 22nd.
I would volunteer for that if you needed some...
And then also, I want to report that along with a dozen NPS administrators, I've begun the Sheltered English Immersion endorsement course, and we're also one of the most raucous groups in that class. When we, when we break out into groups, it's sort of the North Hampton administrators and then all the rest of the districts. So our ELL population is one of the fastest-growing subgroups, as you all know now, and the teachers who work directly with ELLs are required to obtain the SEI endorsement. So I'm very happy that we have such a large contingent of administrators also getting the endorsement so they can support the teachers in their work. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate the North Hampton High School baseball team for being recognized as a finalist in the 2015 MIAA Community Service Award. The players from the North Hampton baseball team volunteered to give up their February vacation to run an indoor clinic and camp at a local indoor arena. Over the course of the week, the players worked with over 60 boys and girls, coaching, teaching, and helping them to become better athletes. And that's my report.
Excellent.
I have a question on your report, just a quick question. You said that 120 applicants for 57 available seats. Were there any seats available, like in any grades left, you know? Are there any seats available, like there's one in fourth grade or something like that because of what they did?
We have, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question.
With 120 applicants, let's say all 120 wanted to be seniors, I mean, not that they...
Oh, no, no, no.